Ladies and gentlemen, it is 3 o'clock on Wednesday, June 2nd. I'd like to call to order the Tallahassee City Commission meeting. It's great to see everyone. Thank you so much for joining us. If you will please rise and join me. It's my honor to introduce Reverend Abigail Moon, or Mother Moon, who is Senior Associate Rector at St. John's Episcopal Church, who will provide the invocation.
Let us pray. Almighty God, may your grace cover each aspect of this meeting. We pray that all voices will be heard and that we will have a mindset of inclusivity. May this be a safe space for people to express their opinions in a place where ideas matter more than titles. May everyone be engaged and involved, and may all concerns be addressed. Send down upon those who hold office in this city the spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice, that with steadfast purpose they may faithfully serve in their offices to promote the well-being of all people. And finally, teach our people to rely on your strength and to accept their responsibilities to their fellow citizens, that they may be trustworthy leaders and make wise decisions for the well-being of our society. That we may serve you faithfully in our generation and honor your name. Amen.
Amen. Ladies and gentlemen, the American flag is to my right, your left. Will you please join with me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Reverend Moon, thank you so much for the invocation. On a personal note, as I have mentioned before, I know that you and your congregation at St. John's Episcopal praise for myself and this body every week. And I want you to know that we certainly do appreciate your thoughts and your prayers from your congregation. Please let them know how much we appreciate it. Folks, we've got a great agenda today, so we do not have a public hearing. With that, Mr. Manager, do we have any agenda modifications?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. Item 13.07 has been added to your agenda. It is for the ratification of the PBA contract with officers, TPD officers and investigators.
Excellent. Any questions, colleagues? Okay, moving on to presentations. Ladies and gentlemen, we have two dynamic presentations today that I'm very excited about. First and foremost, June is Pride Month. And I would like to invite the Office of the Mayor, LGBTQ+ Advisory Council representatives that are here today to please come join me at the podium, led by the Chair, Lauren Kelly Manders. Thank you all so very much for coming. And it is my honor and privilege to present this proclamation from the governing body of the City of Tallahassee, a proclamation, whereas a central tenet of United States law is the principle of non-discrimination and equal protection under the law as human rights. And whereas members of the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, and questioning LGBTQ communities still face ongoing discrimination based on their innate status, resulting in untallied human tragedy, loss of life, community isolation, and abuse. And whereas the City of Tallahassee opposes any type of oppression, be it based on race, gender, gender identity, expression, or sexual orientation, and is committed to justice and equality for all individuals. And whereas the City of Tallahassee has long strived for equal rights for all citizens and maintains a strong stand that each individual deserves to be treated equally and with respect, no matter what their sexual orientation, gender identity, gender expression, race, size, documentation status, color, creed, ethnic origin, or religion may be. And whereas to celebrate the richness and diversity of the Tallahassee community, the Office of the Mayor, John Daly's LGBTQ+ Advisory Council and various community organizations, businesses, and individuals will conduct various cultural, educational, and entertainment activities during the month of June 2021 to focus the attention on the importance of equality, equity, acceptance, and respect for diversity among us. Now therefore, I, John Daly, by the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Tallahassee, do hereby recognize the month of June as Pride Month to honor the freedom from prejudice and bias in any form and in recognition and praise of those members of our community who constantly fight the battle for equal treatment for all citizens regardless of sexual orientation, gender identity, gender expression, race, color, creed, size, documentation status, ethnic origin or religion, and further restate the City of Tallahassee's commitment to remain adamantly opposed to all forms of discrimination and oppression. In witness of each and every one of you today, I have signed, John Daly, dated June 2nd, 2021. It is my honor and privilege to present this proclamation to representatives of my advisory council and to the Chair. Lauren, you all have done an absolutely amazing job. Our advisory council is one of the first in the state of Florida. Many of the incredible policy actions that we have taken in the past two and a half years, the ideas have come from you. I appreciate your guidance. The Commission appreciates your guidance. City of Tallahassee appreciates your guidance. Lauren, let me present this to you. And if you would like to present, provide some remarks?
I just want to take this opportunity to thank Mayor Daly and the City of Tallahassee and my fellow advisory council members. This has been an incredible experience. And as Mayor Daly said, it's the first of three advisory councils of its type in the state. That means that Leon County and the City of Tallahassee once again are leading the state in terms of being accepting, inclusive. It's been a pleasure to take a look at all of the city's policies and see where areas need to be revised or new perspective can be brought. And I'm just very proud of the work that we're doing and the reception that we've received. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, if y'all don't mind, my colleagues are going to join us. If we can position ourselves for a picture, that'd be fantastic. I have 10 seconds. I have to turn it off. Okay, I apologize. Word's out, folks. And on, 3, 1, 2, 3. Thank you. Thanks, Cam. Appreciate it. Who here? I see Carl in the back from the Democrat, looking at other media outlets that are here as well. This is a surprise. And this is one that I am extremely, extremely proud of and excited for. So this will be the first time you've heard about this from those of you from the media, but also those of you from the general public. For our next presentation, I'm just going to go ahead and turn it over to the City Manager, who will introduce Cynthia Barber for the presentation. Please, Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If you'll stay where you are, appreciate that entree into this really exciting announcement. If I can ask Deputy City Manager Cynthia Barber, who has been instrumental in the outcome and the achievement that we'll hear about today, if she can join you at the podium. And I'd like to recognize Ms. Hillary Varnador from the U.S. Green Building Council. She's joining us via WebEx for, as you said, Mr. Mayor, a very, very special presentation. One that is indicative of who we are as a city and what we embrace and the leadership that you and the City Commissioners provide. So with that, I would like to recognize Ms. Varnador. We're going to put her up on the big screen on WebEx for the presentation from the U.S. Green Building Council.
Good afternoon. Hope my audio is okay?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Well, thanks, everyone. I'm Hillary Varnador. I'm the Vice President for Cities at the U.S. Green Building Council. I'm actually located in Maryland, just from a... So you know where I'm calling in from. But I'm really happy to be here with you today to celebrate the City of Tallahassee's LEED Gold Certification. Sustainability is about making decisions that help increase the living standard for people. And at the U.S. Green Building Council, we believe that better buildings, cities, and communities lead to better lives. Cities face tremendous challenges. But Tallahassee is committed to a brighter future for all. This certification recognizes the progress you are making and serves as an example to others across the country and around the world. I'd like to share a few examples of your sustainability leadership from the application. First, it really hit me that Tallahassee has taken a holistic, people-centered approach to resilience. Your Community Resilience Plan and then the most recent annual plan, Annual Report, excuse me, showcase intentional work on diverse issues such as community cohesion, environmental justice, housing insecurity, and hazard mitigation. Projects like the Vacant to Vibrant Initiative, Graffiti to Murals Program, and the city's first urban farm, City Farm, these projects are solving social, economic, and environmental challenges all at once. It's really fascinating work, and we're excited to see it grow and expand. Working towards zero carbon emissions is an important aspect of LEED, and Tallahassee scored high when benchmarked peer-to-peer on greenhouse gas emissions per capita. Your recent Clean Energy Resolution and commitment to transition to 100% renewable energy by 2050 stood out. In this decade of action, we certainly need all hands on deck. A commitment to urban forestry and conservation ensures that the network of tree canopy, parks, trails, and other natural spaces remain viable for biological communities while also providing sanctuary for people, both today and into the future. Well, currently, 79% of residents in Tallahassee live within a half-mile walk distance to green public spaces, and more than 23% of the city is identified as natural resource area. You also pointed out in your application initiatives like TAP, Thinking About Personal Pollution, that really connect ecosystem services with environmental stewardship and literacy, so really educating the future generations of Tallahassee on why this is so important. So these examples and many others show how USGBC's vision for a sustainable future for everyone and within the next generation isn't just some far-reaching ideal. Tallahassee's LEED for cities work will not only help create safer, healthier, more efficient, and resilient places, but also ensure everyone has access to a better way of life. And this work is only made possible because of committed people, probably many of them in the room there, and partners around the community. So first, I'd just like to commend your staff team. As you probably know, we worked with Abina and Adam, Bruce and Janine. They've really committed to the process and drove the effort locally. They happen to be the first city staff team to go through the certification process outside of a leadership cohort. And what that means is that they navigated the certification process on their own. So I got to give a shout out to them. They're smart, they're sophisticated, and they really are dedicated to the future of Tallahassee. But of course, my deepest appreciation goes to you, Mayor Daly, and the City Commissioners for recognizing the importance of this work and committing leadership on sustainability and resilience. With leadership support and buy-in across departments and of course, with community stakeholders, the results of this effort will be transformative. So all this collaboration and work is what brought us here. This certificate and USGBC's support is not only a transaction, but it's really a symbol that we're in this for the long haul with you. We believe in you, and we believe in what we can all do together. It's a worldwide effort to create a sustainable, green future. But we're also aware that the action taken, the change that we see, the implementation of all of this, it happens at the local level, and it's really because of all of you. So it's just an honor to be here. I'm sorry I'm virtual. Abina, you wanted to be there in person, but you know, five or six days was tough to turn that around. So I'm glad to be here with you virtually and celebrating. And congratulations once again to Tallahassee for becoming not only LEED Gold, but a LEED Gold capital city. So thank you and many congratulations.
Mayor, Commissioners, appointed officials, and all who assembled, I am so excited to be here today. I remember being told on April 1st, 2008... I'll tell you later why I remember that day so well. But I remember being told that Tallahassee would become a leader in sustainability, locally, regionally, statewide, and even nationally. But today, we'll recognize internationally, and I'm so excited to stand here to represent the thousands of employees that helped to make this happen and to represent a commission with the leadership that says that we will not only do it, but we'll do it better than most, in most cases, better than all. Also supportive of our appointed officials, our City Manager, and the other appointed officials whose departments have also stepped up and contributed. So we are very excited about it. This, as you've heard, represents a significant accomplishment for Tallahassee, one that showcased the city's commitment to sustainability, resilience, human health, and social equity. Our commitment to these ideas helps make Tallahassee not only a wonderful place to live, but also a wonderful place to work and yes, to play. We've had programs that you've heard a lot about, so I won't go over all of them. But this has been a long journey for us, from programs like our TAP, or Thinking About Personal Pollution and Reach programs, a number of energy conservation programs that we've been doing for many, many years, as well as some of our new initiatives, the 62-megawatt solar farm at our international airport, our curbside recycling program, the city farm that brings fruits and vegetables to our neighbors where they may not have access to those fresh foods. To our Green Fleet Program, which is a nationally recognized program, our electric buses, the best parks and trail system in America, again, another national recognition. Paperless processes, a lot of our departments are behind the scenes, and you wonder if and how they contribute. They certainly do. A number of paperless processes that have reduced our reliance on natural resources and reduced the time to travel in order to conduct business with us. And also, one that's very important, our civil engagement with individuals and families in our community that work to improve their quality of life. And ultimately, this is the result of the amazing work that's done every day in our community and our organization to make Tallahassee a more sustainable and resilient community. And that happens because of the leadership in this organization and our department directors and their division heads are really critical to that. So I'd like to ask for those departments who are in the audience, and that's all of you, who have helped to make this happen. If you will join us at the podium for this moment. Wayne Tetter? Didn't want to have to call you out? Mayor?
While we're getting set up, first of all, Hillary, thank you so much for joining us from Maryland. We certainly do appreciate it. We look forward to hosting you in Tallahassee. Be careful, you'll fall in love with the city and want to move down. I too want to say that on behalf of the City Commission, for everybody that's part of the City of Tallahassee family that's up here, y'all did an absolutely tremendous job. This is a huge award in recognition. And we are all very proud to work with each and every one of you every day. Thank you.
Run, Raul, run.
Run, Raul, run.
Thanks, Steve.
All right, Diane, you're going to have to tell me later.
Okay, I'll tell you. It's a family show.
Wow, what a great way to start off the meeting. Mr. Manager, do we have any announcements today?
No, Mr. Mayor.
All right, why don't we go straight into citizen input on agenda items? Citizen input on agenda items. Of course, everyone has the opportunity to participate, either in person or virtually. As I like to start off all of our meetings, let's conduct ourselves in the most civil, civic manner and set the example for the whole world how it is done right. With that, Mr. Cook, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. We will take speakers at this time on the items on our agenda. I don't think I have any speakers for un-agenda items, but if there are those who want to speak on things that are not on the agenda, they should fill out a speaker form, and we'll take those at the end of the meeting. But at this point, we'll give speakers three minutes for remarks. I'll give you a heads up at 2 and 1/2. You can speak from the microphone at the podium in the middle of the room. We do have a couple of one or two speakers connected via WebEx, but we'll begin with the speakers here in person. Mayor, our first speaker is Salome Garcia, speaking on the Clean Energy Plan, which is item 1302.
Wonderful. Thank you so much for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Salome Garcia. My address is 1420 North Meridian Road, right here in Tallahassee, Florida. I just wanted to, first of all, thank you so much for recognizing us and for allowing us to speak. I'm with the CLEO Institute. The CLEO Institute represents over 4,000 residents around the City of Tallahassee, and we focus on equitable climate resiliency and are also a member of the Tally 100 Coalition. We've been proud to support the clean energy progress of the city for years now. And I'm here to speak in support of the Clean Energy Plan. Thank you for every work, every hour that you've put in over the past years. Michael Olson here in the room, thank you so much. We really, really appreciate it. I could stand here and thank you for hours, but because I only have 2 and 1/2 minutes of your time, I'm going to focus on some gaps that we've identified within the current plan. We in Florida, I don't have to go on and say, but we are in the front lines of the climate crisis. Lowering our greenhouse gas emissions is the most efficient way to mitigate the impacts of the climate crisis. Low and moderate income households, which I'm going to refer to as LMI households, are at the front lines of that conversation. They have the most to lose and the least to gain from a clean energy transition. What does that mean? We're going to see today in the presentation an energy burden map, and income inequality in our city has skyrocketed. And it is crucial and important to prioritize LMI households in our clean energy progress. I don't have to tell you all this. I know that every single person in the group in this room wants to prioritize our low and moderate income communities. Over 70% of the survey participants for the Clean Energy Plan were homeowners, and we know that that's not truly representative of our community here. We can't effectively prioritize our LMI households unless we have voices represented in the decision-making table. And right now, in the consultancy ship team, there is not a single equity grassroots organization represented. The City of Tampa, the City of Mamitada County in their clean energy plans have included frontline community organizations in the consultancy ship team. The plan mentions consultants are already in conversations with local groups. We've participated in a lot of these conversations. They've been incredible. But we need people of color representative of the LMI households that this plan will impact, helping shape the best way forward, not only providing input, but at the table. So I make the CLEO Institute available, our resources, our knowledge, our community contacts. We want to help the city in this incredible plan, and we look forward to providing examples of how other cities are incorporating demand-side management and energy efficiency programs to really prioritize our most vulnerable residents.
You only have 30 seconds left.
The clean energy movement is incredible, but it only works when we prioritize our most vulnerable residents. Thank you so much. Have a really good afternoon.
Thank you. Our next speaker.
Next speaker is Katrina Irwin, and then we'll hear Carolyn Burns.
Thank you so much for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Katrina Irwin, and I live at 1800 West Pensacola Street in Tallahassee, Florida. My name is Katrina Irwin, and I'm the Associate Program Manager with the CLEO Institute. In my work, I speak with hundreds of Tallahassee students and frontline community residents about the intersectionality of climate change, clean energy, and how it impacts our everyday lives. Food insecurity, good-paying jobs, affordable housing, public transportation. These issues are all interconnected with our energy policy decisions. Tallahassee has an opportunity to prioritize our low-income communities by truly listening to what our neighborhood alliances are saying. Energy efficiency programs and demand-side management program offerings should be an integral part of how we address energy equity. I don't see an equity action plan at all in the information provided today. We need to not only collaborate with environmental and energy organizations, but with community organizations who focus on serving our vulnerable households. Energy policy is not an isolated issue. And addressing it as an isolated issue will only continue to amplify the inequity we are already seeing. In order to be a true clean energy leader as a city, we must view our clean energy plan with an intersectional lens, not only in collaboration with community organizations who represent those disproportionately impacted, but in partnership with them. City of Tallahassee, thank you so much for the Clean Energy Plan. We are so happy to see the progress it has made. However, we need an increased focus on equitable energy policy because this plan will not work if we leave out vulnerable communities behind in the process. This is why we are working with members of the city to pass a climate emergency declaration, which would encourage adding an equity consultant in the consultancy ship body of the Clean Energy Plan. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Carolyn Burns, and then Shelby Green, both on the same item.
Thank you so much for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Carolyn Burns. My home address is 8457 Manor Drive in Tallahassee. Hello, thank you for having us here. My name is Carolyn Burns, and I am a program manager for the CLEO Institute. My work with CLEO has primarily been with students and women from low-income backgrounds. I am fully in support of the Clean Energy Plan, and I'm proud of the work that's been done so far. I'm incredibly proud to live in a city that is taking these steps to move away from the use of fossil fuels. It's been well-established that these types of energy production have negative impacts on our environment, climate, local economies, and public health. The Clean Energy Team has communicated with us on many occasions, and we greatly appreciate the listening sessions and real transparency. I do want to echo the sentiments of my team members when it comes to equity and justice. Many of the women I work with are not homeowners and are disproportionately affected by high utility costs. In order to earn their support for this plan, it's crucial to have representation in the decision-making body in order to explicitly address the concerns of low- and middle-income people here in Tallahassee. This will help us to move forward in a way that is equitable and just, as well as making us more resilient into the future and a better place to live. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Mr. Clark.
Next is Shelby Green, and then we will hear Meta Calder.
Thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, board. My name is Shelby Green, and I reside at 519 Ingleside Avenue. Once again, I apologize for looking down at my phone, but I just wanted to write out my thoughts. I'm here today to express my concerns about the status of the Clean Energy Plan that is lacking input from underserved communities and to once and again encourage you all to reinstate the utility moratorium. So far, 24 responses have been collected about the plan, but an overwhelming majority, about 78%, are from older, wealthier, and highly educated populations of Tallahassee. The resolution promised to center equity and justice in the energy transition and also emphasized the need to center equity and justice and so that it's all realized by all Tallahassee residents. It also promised to measure energy... It also promised to measure energy cost burden and adopt policies that reduce the cost burden for low-income customers. Last month, the utility moratorium ended. Since then, about 2,700 homes have had their utility service disconnected, a majority of which reside in census tracts with high rates of energy burden. Today, the city accepted an award on being a LEED Gold City, on being a city that is committed to preserving the human health of Tallahassee residents. There are Tallahassee residents who have no power or water in their homes with hurricane season right around the corner. Yesterday, while I was canvassing so that residents know that utility disconnections have resumed, they spoke to me and told me they didn't know at all. I met one man who was using candles to light his home and cook outside. If you want to pass policies that adequately address energy burden, first reinstate the utility moratorium and prioritize direct communications with residents. You can start with those who have passed you on their utility bill, about 9,000, or you can start with the ones who've already been disconnected, about 3,000. What better way to prioritize vulnerable residents by directly getting their... By directly getting their comments and making sure they get their lights back on by either connecting them to project share funds, our floor funds, or the capital agencies' lie heat program. And then don't stop there, investigate why their residents who owe $600 to $1,000 a month on the utility bill, who live in homes with less than 1,000 square feet, and encourage city staff to follow up by scheduling them with energy audits and other resources through the city's neighborhood reach and weatherization programs. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker.
Next speaker is Meta Calder, speaking on item 1304, the single-use plastics policy.
Thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Meta Calder, 3740 Ravine Drive, and I'm here today representing the League of Women Voters Tallahassee. I want to thank the City Commission for taking up this issue to adopt a single-use plastic policy for the city's activities and to advocate for adopting the policy. I have nothing to add to the excellent report and draft policy prepared by city staff. As stated in the report and as consistent with today's presentation by the U.S. Green Building Council, our city has a well-deserved history of implementing actions that protect the environment, and adoption and implementation of this policy will serve to add to that reputation. Further, via adoption, the city, as stated in the policy, has an opportunity to demonstrate leadership and sustainability while reducing environmental impacts associated with the manufacturing disposal of these products. Thank you again, and particular thanks to Adam Jacobs. If he ever chooses, I think he could have a possible alternative career in bill drafting.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Mr. Clerk.
Next is Donna Legarre, and then Whitfield Leland will follow her.
I was told that I showed you slides.
That may be, that may be a challenge, I think someone's coming from the back, but...
Ma'am, if you want, I'll tell you what, let's take Mr. Leland now, and we'll give you a second to set up the slides, and we'll come right back to you.
This gentleman right here.
This gentleman right here.
Straight ahead of you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Whitfield Leland, 754 West 7th Avenue. I want to speak on item 1307. First, let me say, I'm glad that we was able to get agreement, but after reading the agreement, page to page, and talking to some of our TPD officers, I do, I mean, can I ask one question though, real quick? What is the average, what is the limit, the years that you have to work for the city to retire?
Mr. Cook.
For a police officer?
No, 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 no. I said for a city employee.
Police officer? Would you please answer?
It depends on which category you're in, general employees?
General, let's say general.
33 years.
So 33 years for them. So, we're looking at this, the new set retirement age of 27, and if we look at what federal government and some other agencies does, it's not that high. The federal government started at 20, 20 years, officers at 20 years, they can retire 20 years, due to health issues, stress, depression, alcoholism, divorce, safety concerns, wear and tear on the body. Like I said, after talking to some officers, they feel like that is kind of high. I know that, you know, it's an agreement that we came, but I think that's something that should be looked at, if not now, in the near future. Also, with, I was looking at the skills ability test, and from the way it's written, I mean, y'all can correct me while I'm here, while I'm here, but if you're hired after October 1st, 2020, it's mandatory that you take the test, so is it mandatory for every officer after or every officer inside the department? Talking to a couple officers, that's a concern, because they feel like everybody should have to take the test, not just the ones we just bringing on the force now. And also, and the last that I, that I see an issue with is, and it's not just me, you know, I'm talking to, you know, officers, and then I'm talking to other officers, is that other law enforcement departments, is the retirement contribution and insurance, health insurance is extremely high. So I'm asking the commission to at least look at some of these, like, I mean, look at some of this, because, I mean, I know I get up here and I say, you know, we need TPD, need to do this, TPD need to do that, but at the end of the day, that's only holding them accountable to do their job. They are human beings, they get out there, they risk their life, and at the end of the day, we as a city and a commission, we should at least favor health insurance, retirement, you know what I'm saying? Because some of them, some of them came into that field, and they end up losing their life in the field, they didn't even get a chance to retire. And I know there's death benefits in there, but still at the same time, though, I think that's just something that we should look at, and that's all I got.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, our next speaker.
Thank you, Mayor. Our next speaker is Stanley Sims. Mr. Sims had several items commenting on the items Mr. Leland just discussed, ethical culture, and the budget.
The budget is an unagenda item.
Thank you. All right.
Your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, I'm Stanley Sims, 1320 Avondale Way. As a point of privilege, I also want to congratulate Ms. Cynthia Barber for bringing attention to Tallahassee going green. This is not a first time for her to get national recognition. I remember when she was snatched up out of the department, when sustainability, back in 2012, she was honored by President Obama. So we are very happy that she is still sustaining, and she loves to share the glory with all of those people. She didn't call me up there, but I let that slide. My next thing is that I'd like to talk about today is this police budget. I just left a city in Minnesota. If anything that has elevated the need for law enforcement is what I saw in Minnesota. Commissioner Matt Long, Commissioner Cox, Porter, thank you for your support in those endeavors, because I went to a city that they have blocked off, I said gang members have blocked off. I wanted to go into the store to take a picture, Mr. Matt Low, you know me and my camera, by that register that started this movement, but there's such an eatkebob spirit. And Commissioner Cox, you know what I mean when I say eatkebob spirit, I could only make five or six steps into that store, and the Black Panthers had to help me out. And the gentleman told me, Mr. Sims, if you get sick, we're going to have to carry you to the perimeter in order for you to get assistance, because no one comes in here. With that said, I'm disappointed in our law enforcement in this community, TPD. I feel that they have failed to build trust in this community. It's a two-way street. It's not photo optics. It's when words become deeds. We need real action. And I'm moving to my next point when we come to ethical code. We cannot have ethical code when we have a city manager cherry picks who he talks to.
You're at 30 seconds.
And it's unfortunate that he segregates us, and he puts us against one another, and then sits there and thinks like we're all open. And Mayor, you need to stop supporting it. I have invitations pending your office. If Tallahassee is truly open, open to people you don't agree with, Biden right now is sitting down with GOP leaders trying to get us a bill back, can I get a meeting with you?
You're at three minutes.
Call me, bitch.
Thank you so much. Mr. Clerk, our next speaker.
I believe Donna Legarre.
Thanks for joining us, your name and address for the record, please.
Donna Legarre, 2239 Ellicott Drive, and I'm here for number 1304, the single-use plastics policy. And I provided a few slides to go with it. First of all, I wanted to say that I appreciate the work that has gone into this policy review. I did read it, and I'm here to support the policy. It's a start in tackling a huge problem, but we as a community have to start somewhere. And I feel like the city should take the lead by example and teach others along the way. That's a picture at Lake Alberta, and all the trash that was, not all the trash, that was just some of the trash that was collected by two canoeists in one, one two-hour session on the lake. But on a much smaller scale, I'm also, I'm a retired person after running native nurseries for 40 years, and it would have been a lot cheaper for us to serve our hot cider every Saturday during the Christmas seasons in styrofoam cups, but we paid extra to purchase paper hot cups, and we did that for all 40 years, and they continue to do it. That's really marketing, and so when you get into, if you get complaints about vendors that say, well, I can't afford to buy paper clampshell cases, I have to use styrofoam, that, they could come back and look at it more as a marketing theme, and, and people like me would actually go and shop with them. I'm not about to buy anything that's going to be served up in styrofoam, and I won't go to a restaurant that serves in styrofoam cups, I'm just not going to do it. So it's a starting place. Also at the nursery, all of our employees bring their own mugs, they bring their own, not recyclable, but reusable water bottle. It, it's easy to do, but it just takes time to get used to it, and I think your employees would get used to the program. Apalachia Audubon, I forgot to mention that I'm a representative of Apalachia Audubon Society, so I'm speaking as an individual, but I am here for Apalachia Audubon. We've adopted Lake Alberta, which you see in the slide there, for the past four years. It's a top-notch birding location with wood storks and other rare and community common birds spotted regularly. We are very frustrated with the amount of trash that accumulates in the lake. It's not coming from the people that are using the park, it's coming...
You're about 15 seconds.
Oh, boy. Okay, well, it's coming through the water system. Can you show the other two slides? One more. There's the one I want you to see. Those are wood storks, and when, if we're trying to promote Tallahassee as a lead gold city, our parks and wrecks, top-notch, this is what you look at when you look through a pair of binoculars and you see those birds, ecotourism. It's really important, not only for economics, but also for the health of people. These microplastics are going right into the aquifer.
Thank you.
So, please support it.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Mr. Clerk.
Mayor, that's the last speaker we have in person. We do have Zachariah Shealy attached, or cannot attached, connected via WebEx.
Mr. Shealy?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, sir, your name and address for the record, please.
Zachariah Shealy, 3810 Bucklake Road. All right, I'll be brief. Good afternoon, my name is Zachariah Shealy. I'm here today speaking on behalf of Sustainable Tallahassee as a member of the Board of Directors. I'm here to show support for the policy regarding single-use plastics. Sustainable Tallahassee has been working for a number of years with our allies, such as the League of Women Voters, who you heard from earlier, and the Sierra Club, to limit the use of single-use plastics in our community. About two years ago in 2019, Leon County adopted a similar policy to the one being proposed today, so I'm glad this agenda item has been put forward today. I'm not here to blurt out statistics or factoids about plastic at you, the science is clear. We know without a doubt that single-use plastics have a harmful effect on our environment and economy due to their wasteful nature. We also know that there are sustainable alternatives out there waiting to be utilized. Plastics infect every part of, every part of our world, our oceans, lands, and even our bodies when they break down and are adjusted by humans and animals alike. The city of Tallahassee, as the capital of Florida, needs to stand up and lead by example for local businesses, surrounding cities, and the nation as a whole on how to make more sustainable choices regarding single-use plastics. And this policy will be that beginning. Sustainable Tallahassee encourages you to vote yes today, but not stop there. We encourage you to come up with new ways to limit plastics in our community and work closer with small businesses to help them transition to more sustainable alternatives and follow in the city's footsteps. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Speaker, I mean, excuse me, Mr. Clerk, our next speaker.
Grant Gelhart had registered to speak at the beginning of this meeting, he had not connected, but I want to see if Grant Gelhart is there.
Gelhart, are you with us?
And if not, Mayor, that's the last speaker I have for items on our agenda. Again, we'll come to unagenda speakers at the end of the meeting.
I think Mr. Gelhart would be pleased for me to state on the record, I know I did, if not each and every one of us received an email from, Mr. Gelhart on behalf of the Sierra Club in support of the item as well.
Well, I actually received a phone call.
I got a phone call, too.
Oh, okay. Just, just letting you know, that's my...
All right, any other speakers today?
No, sir.
Excellent. Mr. Manager, we're on item 8.01, Presentation for City Commission.
Mr. Mayor, the Inspector General Sutton will present this annual financial report.
Mr. Sutton, thank you for joining us.
Thank you, and good afternoon. First, I want to apologize for Kayla McGriff, the Chair of the Audit Committee, not being able to be here this evening.
No worries.
She had something come up and was had to go out of town. Next, I'd like to acknowledge the great job that the folks in Financial Services and our public accounting firm, Moore Stevens Lovelace, did this past year, working through the pandemic and getting the financial statement audit completed on time. On behalf of the Audit Committee, I thank each and every one of them for the excellent job that they did. On March 18th of this year, the Audit Committee met and accepted the annual financial report and associated auditors' reports from the city's external auditors on behalf of the City Commission. This year, as with every previous year, the city received an unqualified opinion on the annual financial report. The unmodified opinion is the highest level of opinion that can be received through an audit. The city also received an unmodified opinion on compliance with federal-state grant funding requirements. As part of last year's audit, there were four issues identified in the financial statement audit. Of those four, two were completely resolved this year, and two were carried forward as being partially addressed. In this year's audit, there was one new issue identified. Management has already taken corrective action on the one new issue, and is in the process of implementing new IT systems which should address both of the two issues that were carried over from the previous year. The Audit Committee has reviewed and accepted the audited financial statement reports, as well as reviewed management's response to the identified issues. I, on behalf of the Audit Committee, request the acceptance of the fiscal year 2020 annual financial report as presented. This concludes my presentation, and I, as well as the Director of Financial Services, Patrick Twiman, are available for answering any questions.
So, Mr. Sutton, it's safe to say that we had a pretty good audit, and it came out all right.
We did have a very good year this year, all things considered.
Excellent. Opened up, the motion on the table would be, the appropriate motion on the table would be to accept the audit findings as presented. So, but it's opened up for discussion and a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Been properly moved by Commissioner Williams Cox, seconded by Commissioner Richardson, seeing no further comment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, 5-0. Mr. Sutton, thank you very much. We're now on the consent agenda, have any items been pulled off consent?
No, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Any action on consent, Colleen?
With acceptance of consent agenda.
Consent agenda's been properly moved by Commissioner Williams Cox, seconded by Commissioner Porter, seeing no further comment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously. We're on item 12.01, Introduction of Ordinance, Madam Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 12.01, Introduction of Ordinance Number 21-0-20, an ordinance of the city of Tallahassee adopting a text amendment to the mobility element of the 2030 Tallahassee-Leon County Comprehensive Plan related to the Tallahassee-Leon County Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan, providing for severability and conflicts and provided an effective date. Recommended action is Option 1, Introduce Ordinance Number 21-0-20, and set the first and only public hearing for June 8th, 2021, at 6:00 PM at the joint meeting of the City Commission and Leon County Board of County Commissioners in the Leon County Board of County Commissioners Chambers in the Leon County Courthouse.
Excellent, thank you, Madam Attorney. Let's open it up for discussion, and I'm... And obviously, there's no official action except for the introduction of ordinance, which is recommended, item number one.
Move option number one, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Been properly moved by Commissioner Richardson, seconded by Commissioner Porter, seeing no further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, five zero. 12.02, Madam Attorney.
Thank you. Item number 12.02, Introduction of Ordinance Number 21-0-23, An Ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, Florida Amending Section 2-75 of the Code of General Ordinances Regarding Certification of Inspector General, Providing for Conflicts, Providing for Severability, and Provided an Effective Date. Recommended action is Option 1, Introduce Ordinance Number 21-0-23 and Set the First and Only Public Hearing for June 16, 2021, at 5:00 PM in the City of Tallahassee City Commission Chambers at City Hall.
Wonderful, thank you. Colleagues, action, comment?
Move option number one, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Commissioner Richardson properly moved staff recommendation, option number one, seconded by Commissioner Williams Cox, seeing no further comment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, five zero. 12.03, Madam Attorney.
Item number 12.03, Introduction of Ordinance Number 21-Z-19, An Ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, Florida Removing a Structure in the All Saints Neighborhood from the Local Register of Historic Places, Rezoning a Property in the All Saints Neighborhood to Remove an Historic Preservation Overlay, Providing for Conflicts, Providing for Severability, and Provided an Effective Date. Recommended action is Option 1, Introduce Ordinance Number 21-Z-19 and Set the First and Only Public Hearing for June 16, 2021, at 5:00 PM in the City of Tallahassee City Commission Chambers at City Hall.
Thank you. Colleagues, action, comments?
Move option number one, Mr. Mayor, to introduce the ordinance.
Commissioner Richardson moves option number one as recommended by staff. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Diane Williams Cox, seeing no further comment. All those in favor of the motion on the table signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, five zero. We are now on policy formation and direction, item number 13.01. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If we could pull up Ashley Edwards on our WebEx application, she's joining me for this item. Mayor Commissioners, you recently received a request from Capitol Health Plan to name the walking trails within Cascade's Park in honor of Dr. Nancy Van Vesem. Dr. Nancy Van Vesem dedicated her life to helping others, serving as a physician and Capitol Health Plan's Chief Medical Officer for more than 20 years. She was passionate about the health and wellness of her patients and the entire community. And as a result, she was committed to supporting such public health initiatives, such as the opening of Cascade's Park and specifically the development of its walking trails. In 2018, Dr. Van Vesem was tragically killed during the shooting at the Hot Yoga Studio. To honor her life and legacy, Capitol Health Plan requests that the walking trails within Cascade's Park be named in her honor. The Parks and Recreation Advisory Board supports this request, and this agenda item presented tonight recommends your approval. Ashley Edwards, our Parks and Recreation Director, is here to answer questions. And at this time, I'd like to invite Tom Glennon, Senior Vice President of Capitol Health Plan, to come forward to share a few words.
Tom, it's great to see you. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate it. Thank you, Commissioners. I'd like to first thank Ashley and Jessica with Parks and Rec for all their help and support. They made the process very understandable and very easy to go through, and I greatly appreciate their help. Dr. Van Vesem, Nancy was an incredible person. In addition to working as a physician and later as our Chief Medical Officer for over 20 years, Nancy was mother to three wonderful daughters, sister to a family that loved her dearly, a colleague, and a great friend to many of us. I think, in fact, many of the Commissioners may have known Nancy. She is and will continue to be greatly missed by those who knew and loved her. Nancy's leadership and vision helped shape CHP as the organization it is today. She dedicated her life to helping others, including those in our community, where she served as a volunteer, teacher, and mentor to many. Nancy was passionate about health and the well-being of her patients, CHP members, and the entire community. As such, she was instrumental in CHP supporting the development of Cascade's Park as a public health initiative, and more specifically, the walking trails that continue to be so greatly utilized even today. It is for this reason that we feel it should be a fitting tribute to Nancy and her legacy if this commission would see fit to name those walking trails in her honor. Capitol Health Plan, our Board of Directors, our employees, and I greatly appreciate your consideration in this matter. Thank you.
Tom, thank you so much for representing CHP and being here today. Dr. Van Vesem was an amazing individual, and her spirit does live on in this community. I will be strongly supporting the recommended option to be able to move forward, but let's open it up for any discussion or questions.
Move acceptance of... I'm sorry. Move acceptance of staff recommendation.
It has been properly moved by Commissioner Diane Williams Cox, seconded by Commissioner Curtis Richardson, to move forward with the naming of the Cascade Park walking trails in honor of Dr. Nancy Van Vesem. All those in favor of the motion on the table signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, five zero.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
If I may add that we... I remember that. I remember that day. It was very tragic, and we shall never forget. I do have a request, though, from someone else in the community about naming the trail between the Riley House and Cascade in honor of Ms. Altemeys Barnes. And you know that I'm always in favor of giving people their flowers while they can smell them. And Mrs. Barnes is a very vibrant and very active member of our community, and I would not want to delay or delay doing something like this in her honor. So I would just ask if we could maybe bring back an agenda item to consider, naming the trail between the Riley House and Cascade's Park in honor of Ms. Altemeys Barnes for the work that she's done in the community as well. She received an honor just the other night. As you know, you were the emcee on the Boy Scouts of America. So it didn't get much better than that.
Mr. Mayor, I would...
Put this in the proper...
I would recommend that be formed as a motion, and I'd also recommend it to travel through the Parks Advisory Board, just as this item did. I think that's always a good practice that that board exists. I can't imagine an issue, but I think it would be really well done to do it in that manner.
So am I making a motion to bring back an agenda item? Am I making a motion for the naming? So tell me what I need to do.
I think the motion would be to bring back an agenda item regarding the naming of the trail between the Riley House and Cascade's Park in honor of Altemeys Barnes.
So move.
Second.
Been properly moved by Commissioner Diane Williams Cox, seconded by Commissioner Richardson, truly fitting tribute that I will support now and then. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, five zero. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. Mr. Manager, we're on item number 13.02.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You've heard numerous speakers mention the Clean Energy Plan, and you'll recall in 2019, you adopted a resolution setting a goal for the city of Tallahassee to be 100% renewable by 2050. The plan also included numerous interim steps regarding our fleet and many other initiatives that we felt like we could accomplish early, including the development of a clean energy plan, which is founded in input from our community. So over the last many months, our staff, and we have dedicated staff toward this initiative. I think that's an exception to what you'll find elsewhere. Oftentimes, this is a part-time, extra assignment. We have dedicated staff that are expert in this field, that are knowledgeable of the engineering. They are engineers, in fact, in what the rest of the world is doing. They are part of the electric and gas team led by Rob McGarrett. He is here, as well as Michael Olson and David Byrne from our Electric and Gas Utility. And I'd like to invite David and Michael, whoever's going to give the presentation, Michael.
You both did that.
I was looking for the point, to come forward and give an overview of this plan. This has been shared with other groups. I think it's good to inform where we are in the process and the kind of feedback that we're getting. Thank you, Michael.
Sure. Thank you, City Manager. Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, pointed officials, good afternoon. Today's presentation update on Clean Energy Plan is actually two stories that are kind of playing out in parallel. The first builds on the journey the city started decades ago with our Energy Smart Plus programs, whole host of incentives, rebates, loan programs, grants to improve efficiency, and actually promote renewable energy where we can't. Also included, our Neighborhood Reach Program and other nationally recognized programs. And over the past year, we have taken additional steps to move along that path, whether it's starting to build out the electric vehicle infrastructure, reopening enrollment in our airport-based Tallahassee solar program, and just looking at green building codes and all. There's a whole host of activities that we're continuing to do. But tonight's presentation is not that story. I wanted to focus on the other piece, and as City Manager mentioned, that's this Clean Energy Plan development. So as we learned earlier tonight, we are a lead gold city. We've come quite a ways, but to get to that 100% clean renewable energy, we've got a ways to go. And that Clean Energy Plan is going to be the process by which we kind of build out this roadmap. And as many of you may know, we have hired a consulting team to help shepherd this process. That consulting team is made up of GDS Associates, Southface Institute, as well as ESP Media. And just wanted to recognize one of our colleagues, Jamie Van Pelt, with ESP Media, who's here with us tonight. So as we explore the Clean Energy Plan development process, it's important to understand the component. So it's anchored in this Energy Integrated Resource Plan, which is a bit of a mouthful, but it's basically a look at the long-term energy system needs for our community. It begins then to understand or evaluate what are our power supply alternatives, what are our demand-side alternatives, energy efficiency, green building? How do they rank in terms of technical potential, cost, environmental impact, societal impact? And all those factors go into identifying what are the least-cost plans that begin to balance the supply side, the demand side, and the community priorities tailored to Tallahassee? And that's where that second component is important, that public engagement piece, and how it informs the IRP study throughout. So I want to make very clear that the plan does not exist today. We're in that EIRP process and public engagement process. And hopefully, early 2022, we'll be coming back to you all with recommendations and input on what we feel is best path or pathways forward. So let's just take a look at a bit of the timeline, both where we've come over the past year and what the upcoming year looks like. So unfortunately, with a little bit of bad luck, we launched this in the midst of the pandemic. And whether you're looking at public engagement or even the Energy Integrated Resource Planning process, the pandemic didn't seem to slow us down. In fact, the first few months were largely about helping the consultant team really understand Tallahassee, our systems. We've... We met with the different functional areas, the staff. We provided consultants with tons gigs of data so that they can begin the modeling process to understand those energy needs. We also worked on our public engagement plan. How do we engage a public during the pandemic? How do we, in reference to some of the comments we heard earlier, how do we begin to include the entire community in this discussion? Not just those who tend to offer up suggestions when we ask, but that silent majority, the low, moderate-income members of our community. And so in those first initial months, we were building out those plans. Then later, earlier this year, we took that deep dive. So where it was mentioned that our Clean Energy Survey, we put together an online survey, kind of take a pulse of where the community was. And although we've heard from a little over 2,400 community members to date, as my colleagues mentioned earlier, it doesn't necessarily represent the full community scope. We recognize that. It was heavily cited towards homeownership and perhaps those that are already well-versed in clean energy. So we didn't want to necessarily rely just on online survey results, so we set up a whole series of community information sessions. Unfortunately, again, due to the lingering pandemic, all of those were in a virtual format, but we offered them daytime, evening time. We offered them in different parts of town or focus, different parts of town. We also started developing a network of allies to help us get the word out. And this is from both within the business community, Tally 100, Sustainable Tallahassee, our friends with Cleo Institute, and others. So last year has been full of activity, but at this stage, it was really just about kind of priming the conversation amidst all the issues, all the messages that are within the city. Wanted to make sure clean energy was out there and that folks at least knew we were embarking on this planning process. So from the survey and from the collective virtual workshops that we've held, meetings with neighborhood associations, with business leaders, what were we hearing? What are some of the central tenants that the communities asking or suggesting drive this Clean Energy Planning process? And it may come to no surprise that resiliency, reliability are at the forefront. In addition, cost was a concern, and in particular, this idea of affordability. And this kind of gets to some of the comments we heard earlier. It's not necessarily self-serving from what we were hearing, but how would this Clean Energy Plan or transition impact those, whether it's the LMI customers or historically marginalized communities, that this plan is rolled out not in an equal fashion, but in equitable one, recognizing folks are starting from different places? Finally, there was also a nod to environment, in particular, to local environment. There were questions around the idea, well, are we going to be substituting beneficial agricultural lands or forested areas for solar? So there's a whole host of things. I hadn't read through the whole list here, but you can see that kind of formed the basis of what we're hearing from the community. And these tenants will help the consultant team start to shape those parts and pieces. So now, turning a corner, we're about a year in, a little over the midway point. What are the next few months? What does this upcoming year look like? Here's where it gets to be fun and a bit challenging. As we start to learn more about, or as the analytics are further evolved with this Energy Integrated Resource Plan, we're going to begin to understand, well, what are the trade-offs between environment, economics, societal impacts? Where is this data technology? How does it fit in our unique grid and system? And if the pathway forward was straightforward, we'd just do it. But we recognize there's twists and turns. So having primed the community for this conversation over the past year, I think we're ready later this fall to take that deeper conversation discussion to begin to work out, well, what are the policies that recognize the plight of LMI customers, of our business customers and other residents, as we start to assess these pathways forward? There is a tool, it's on the screen here, this Advanced Clean Energy Scenarios Tool, which helps take this kind of geeky data and make it more accessible and readily readable for the community and trying to understand those trade-offs. So we've got tools, you know, as the analysis... So we've got tools, you know, as the analysis starts to finish up, or we start to see the initial data, we'll get back out into the community, both our residential, our commercial. We'll look at our allies and within, say, the LMI community, community-based networks like our Capital Area Community Action Agency and our United Partners for Health Services, and leveraging these different groups to help make sure we're hearing from the full of the community as we start to take these detailed looks. Finally, and my apologies, I know the graphic here is a bit small, but this you'll find in the exhibit to the Clean Energy Plan Update. But it's basically a summary of the timeline. And encourage you to take a closer look. Let me know if you've got any issues about where we are, how far we have to go. The way I see it, hopefully, we'll be back before you in early 2022 with a summary of what the analytics is telling us, what the community is telling us, what the consultants are recommending, and we can start to see and build together the first pieces of that roadmap. So exciting times still ahead. We've still got a bit of work to do, but we just wanted to provide you this update since it's been about a year since we've got this launch. So appreciate your time and attention, and might invite Mr. McGarrett up to David.
Mr. McGarrett, good to see you, sir.
Good evening. You know, I just wanted to add one comment and then see what questions we can answer for you on the plan. Michael talked about it, everything we do in our business is a balance. We heard comments earlier today about the low, moderate-income community and the financial burden and impacts on them. That's one of the three balance points that we have to do in a utility and all of our planning. The financial impact to our customers, the impact to our environment, and the impact to the reliability, because our customers want our product when it comes on. So this work that Michael has talked about, that the team's doing with the EIRP, we'll take all of that into account and bring back options that are the least-cost, most effective way to balance those three options. The benefit to the environment, the financial impact to our customers, and ensuring that we can still provide reliable energy services to our customers, which is what they demand for their quality of life. So with that, are there any questions that David, Michael, or I can answer about the plan or where we are?
Commissioner Williams-Cox.
Thank you for that great presentation and for the follow-up. My question relates to some of the comments made by the Clio Institute. I know I'm guilty of this myself. Optics say one thing, but what's under the hood says something else. So optics makes it look like you're not looking at those LMI communities, but based on what you're saying, you are. So perhaps what we need here is education and collaboration. One of the things that I've learned since being here at the city is that there are a lot of things going on, but we don't always tell the story about what we're doing, and maybe not in a way that others understand the work that is being done. So what I encourage us to do as we go forward, I say "us" because it's incumbent upon all of us to tell the story and to tell it correctly, is to share with our community what we're doing. And if there are those who feel left out, we need to find them, we need to know who they are so that they can be included. And when I looked at who's on the consultant team, I see a minority business listed there. So I know that that's the effort to make sure that they get into those marginalized communities and so that we can get that information out. And I'm looking at Jamie Nod, and so I know that's the attempt. So we want to make sure of that. And I know that Sean Pittman, who is ESP Media, will make sure of that. So I think what we have here is we just need community, more community education, what we're doing as we continue to move along. And the education is not just one way, it's both ways. It should be a dialogue, because if we're saying something and it sounds like wah-wah-wah-wah-wah-wah, then we need to translate it into what it is that we're really saying. If the people we're working with, if they're talking to us and it sounds like wah-wah-wah-wah-wah, we need to help them to communicate to us so that we understand what it is that we're doing, so we can get more awards like we got earlier, because we're working with all of our community in there. So that's my comment. I think we're on our way, but we've just got to make sure that we bring everybody that want to go along with us.
Well, and Commissioner, I welcome that comment. We want full participation in the community. While we've had a lot of participation through the surveys and all, COVID has slowed us down. It doesn't represent a large percentage of our community, so we want the engagement from all the sectors of our community. Unfortunately, for many, this is not a fun topic or a topic of interest, but we would welcome any group, any help, any ideas folks have for us to reach out and work with different segments of the community, because we want to understand the community's priorities, the community's concerns. Those are important in this IRP process for us to make sure the product we bring back for consideration by the commission, when we're ready to bring it back, has been fully vetted, and it reflects as much of that balance as we can of the community's insights and desires and what's important to the community.
And I would add that other initiatives that we have going on, such as the Southside Action Plan, if there could be someone from your area participating in some of those community pop-ups, that's an opportunity to gather that information, because we all don't have access to do an online survey. So we have to have, you know, kind of more face-to-face kind of encounter. So thank you.
Commissioner Williams-Cox, before moving forward, do you want to make a motion to accept the report so that we can keep moving with discussion?
So move.
Second.
Okay. It's been probably moved by Commissioner Williams-Cox, second by Commissioner Richardson. I have Commissioner Porter and then Commissioner Richardson in line to speak, and then Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for this presentation, for all the work you all done. I'm really excited about where this is going. I do have a couple of follow-up questions along the lines of what Commissioner Williams-Cox was asking. So is there a member of the consultant team or CEP Steering Committee, which specifically focuses on equity and the energy burdens and those issues? Or can you elaborate on how you plan to work with ESP Media to reach?
I don't know that we have a person that's got that title on the committee, but all of the financial work that'll be done through the modeling is focused on what's the impact to our customers. And we will be able to look at that and understand what that does to all of our customer classes, whether it's residential or commercial, or whether it's low-income, moderate-income, high-income, residential, a high user, a low user. We'll be able to quantify those types of actions based on the economics work as we price out the value of the different plans.
I would just add, although it was in the slides, I didn't bring it out, but we did create a steering committee from within the city, and I believe I should know it off top of my head, but we hadn't convened them since before the winter break. But I believe it includes our Abenah Ojatayo and the resiliency and housing perspective.
Okay, thank you. And one thing that was mentioned was an equity action plan or an equity consultant. Is that something we've seen in other cities going along this process or something we've considered?
I don't know that I've seen it. I made that note, and we'll go back, take a look at it, and bring some feedback back through the City Manager on that.
Okay. And I do want to say, I think everyone understands going through COVID, I mean, how difficult it is, and even not going through COVID, how difficult it is, which is why it's so important that we plug in with the groups who are already on the ground doing this work with the most affected communities. It's not easy. And so, you know, I understand that. Could we include some more, and I know there are some that were mentioned in the item and you discussed, you know, working with the Clio Institute, and just is there a space for those partnerships moving forward? Because it seems like we're at the best point in this planning process to open it up to other groups. I'm glad that we're not, sometimes it's like we're too far along and it's hard to start over. So this seems like the best time to do it, which is why I want to make sure we're getting it right.
We're welcome to anybody wanting to come to the table and work with us. All they have to do is reach out to Michael, who's our Clean Energy Plan Manager, and let us know. And I know Michael's met with some of the Clio Institute team and has met with others, and we're open to any of that involvement. Any group, any group that wants to plug in and be a part of that inputting and the discussions, we would welcome it.
Okay, thank you. And then my last question is, have we considered yet, or do we plan on considering what incentives or what expectations we can have of the people we contract with, or our vendors or subcontractors, as far as, you know, our expectations of their energy efficiency? Is that something that we've thought about or other cities do?
I guess I don't understand where you're coming from. Are you talking about making it a contract requirement for anyone we contract with throughout the city on how they use energy or?
Not a contract requirement, just exploring where other cities have gone to renewable and have clean energy plans, if there is any, what options or alternatives there are that impact their work with subcontractors or vendors.
We can take that back and take a look at it. I don't know that we've explored that. We have been interacting with a couple of the other cities in Florida that are ahead of us on this, like Orlando Utility Commission, and working with, and understanding some of the actions they've taken and the challenges they came up with, but we can take that back and take a look at it.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to commend Rob, well, first of all, congratulate you on your retirement.
Thank you.
Which starts as of today, right?
No, I've still got another nine days in the office.
Nine days, okay. No bright ideas. I'm not rushing you. I'm not rushing you, but welcome to the club. It's a nice club to be a part of, but thank you.
Looking forward to it.
Rob, for all that you've done for the city of Tallahassee and her citizens. I could sense the enthusiasm in the presenter this afternoon and just how much you have invested in this project and want it to be the best that it can be. And it's always good to hear when Tallahassee is touted as being a leader. We've heard that today in other aspects as well. And so we're proud of the work that has been done. I want to commend the young people from Clio. I had some early meetings with them and appreciate the input that you've given. We look forward to working with you all, because you all are our future. This is what we're planning for. And so we want to make sure that we leave this place better for you than we found it when we got here. Those of us who are in my age category, I'll accept it. And so we certainly look forward to working with you all in that respect as well. COVID has, you know, and especially in the minority community, I'm going to tell you, people weren't anxious to open their doors, nor should they have opened their doors to strangers. And as Commissioner Williams-Cox said, they don't always necessarily have the access to the technology to do the online surveys. But now that things are starting to clear up, I think a partnership is, again, as Commissioner Williams-Cox said, with the Southside Action Plan, because they've gotten a lot of feedback on that plan through those pop-up surveys in the various neighborhoods. Partnering with them to get some additional input, I think, would be a good way to achieve what you're trying to accomplish in that respect, the LMI group. But again, I'm pleased with where you're headed, what you've done so far, where you're headed, and we look forward to the final product when it comes back to us for approval. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and congratulations, Mr. McGarrett. You've championed us through this crazy bout of hurricanes we've had the last few years. I see you're getting out right before we're at risk again. But I do want to speak broadly on, this was probably one of the most substantial thing we've asked our utility to do maybe ever. You know, the implications are huge. I agree, Commissioner Porter, when we frame this, this is a community effort, you know, so we're asking, we're not just transitioning the utility, we're looking at things like gold lead standards and how we can be more sustainable. I do think it's worthwhile to look to, you know, our vendors and ask them to, you know, follow our lead as we move our fleet to renewable fleets, and we look at trash trucks and everything that can come along with it. So I appreciate that perspective. I do think, you know, we're fighting against so much right now with, we know the disastrous effects of climate change are imminent. You know, a lot of climate scientists have said, you know, our deadline is 2035, so we're not just fighting to get this plan done, we're up against the clock, and we're also fighting the battle of, is the technology in place to just go by it right now and do it instantly? So we understand the magnitude of what we place on your shoulders, and, you know, we stand ready, I believe, as a city commission, to help you accomplish that goals. I do agree, you spoke about the three pillars or the balancing act, so to speak, and I do agree that when we talk about the low-income community and people who are going to be impacted the most, not only do we need to be communicating with them, we need to have that as an equal pillar in decision-making, so somebody on the board who can look at something. And the thing with low-income people is, they're not trying to get engaged with what's happening right here. You know, they're worried about their lives, they're trying to get their bills paid, and it's a struggle just day-to-day. So we hear from them the least, and this impacts them the most. So I do think, however we frame it, we need a voice that's equal weight to say, that's not going to work for me if it's not going to work. Like, that is tremendously important when we move forward. So I don't know the structure of all the different consultants, but I do want to encourage you strongly to reach out, find some people, elevate them. So we're all on the same page when we come back in June, because I imagine there's going to be a multitude of different opinions on this. I imagine we're all not going to agree, but we want to come to the table saying, we all got listened to, we were all part of the conversation, not just asking for us to fill out a survey, but we were meaningfully able to participate. Thank you.
Thank you. There's a motion on the table to accept the status report. Motion was made by Commissioner Diane Williams-Cox, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Seeing no further comment, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, five zero. Point of personal privilege, Mr. McGarrett, will you come join us again at the microphone? Ladies and gentlemen, I had the opportunity a couple of weeks ago to take a tour of the solar farm with some citizens, with Rob and with David. And in preparation for that, I was looking through what the city has done in the electric utility industry, and it's absolutely amazing. And it is all because of the leadership of this man, who after 41 years in the industry, nearly three decades at the city of Tallahassee, this is your last city commission meeting until you come back and complain to us as a citizen. On a serious note, and I think it's important to put this in the record as well, under your leadership, in the past two decades, we have reduced our admissions by 96%. Yet, under your leadership, while reducing the emissions, we have increased our demand, our customers, by 50%, correct?
Yes, sir.
If we were a small country, we would have surpassed the Kyoto Protocol and the Paris Accord before it was even signed into law. Under your leadership, we have one of the most efficient generators in the world. Under your leadership, we have the largest, and I don't know if it's the largest municipal solar field, or the largest solar field located
At an airport.
At an airport.
Largest solar at an airport.
At an airport in the world. At an airport in the world. In fact, the city of Tallahassee, per capita, produces more solar electricity than one other municipality. We are number two in the entire United States. And I will volunteer to go with you to Honolulu to see what they are doing that we are not. All kidding aside, we are the second-largest solar producer per capita in the United States under your leadership. Under your leadership, and I believe we are the only city in the state of Florida, correct me if I'm wrong, if not the southeastern United States, we are the only municipality that powers our entire municipal portfolio, every single building, rec center, everything, by solar electric.
I believe that's correct, Mayor.
And under your leadership, as it's seen down in the corner of the slide, we were named the number-one public electric utility in the nation. Rob, it goes without saying that you are the best, you are an industry leader. You will be missed tremendously at the city of Tallahassee. Thank you for all that you have done.
Thank you. It has been a true pleasure to serve the citizens of the city for the last 30 years. It's been a great ride. I've enjoyed every minute of it. As I've told many of y'all, I couldn't have done it without the support of the commissions and the city managers that I've served under for the last 30 years. And just as important, or more important, the team that works for me. We're very blessed with a strong team. You've seen examples of that tonight. And they're going to serve this community well going forward. Thank you.
Rob, thank you. Mr. Mayor, we're on item number 13.03.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate those words. And I know Rob would tell you he could have done without them, but he certainly deserves them. And it's been a
Absolutely.
pleasure working with him. We've got one last item under Rob's signature. I will introduce it, and he's here for questions. But this really could be a consent item, but I wanted to highlight it on your agenda because it's so much in line with the direction and strategy of the city commission to make sure we provide opportunity and training for individuals within our community. And we're seeking your approval for a grant from the Florida Association for Career and Technical Education. This has to do with the implementation of a, a training yard for grant, the Gas Apprentice Program. This is whereby we bring in individuals that have no skills or abilities in the gas industry. They get training, ultimately become, uh, achieve the journey level in our natural gas system, just a part of who we are as an organization, the leadership you provide. And we're seeking your approval of the grant in the amount of $20,000.
Excellent. Commissioner Richardson, you recognize?
I would move option number one.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, and, and say
Second. Second. Go ahead.
And say, you know, I, I was on the phone with the superintendent, Rocky Hanna, earlier today. And, uh, you know, he gave me the opportunity to serve at Lively Technical College in the last year and a half of my career. And I have become a disciple of career and technical education. And during that time, learned about the apprenticeship program that Rob had established with the city of Tallahassee and was amazed at what they were producing, uh, the kinds of knowledge and skills that they provided for those young men that were coming through that program. And then many of them were being hired by the city of Tallahassee. I mean, we were, uh, uh, training individuals and being able to retain them for this area, for our city and of course, for this area. I'm sure Jauquin probably got a few of them from you, Rob. But that's what we have to be all about, is giving those kinds of training opportunities to our young people. College is fine, and I, you know, as a person with a college degree and two master's degrees, I, you know, promote a higher education. But for many of our students, college is not the route that they might want to take or should take. And certainly, programs like these are a very viable alternative. And I'm sure that the young men that come out of that program, Rob, they could easily make $70,000, $80,000, $90,000 a year in that field, because it is a high-demand, high-skill area. And so, that's a heck of a way to start a career. And so, again, I applaud you all for the work that you've done in that respect.
Commissioner Richardson has properly moved staff recommendation, seconded by Commissioner Williams-Cox. Is there any other comment? Mr. Mayor Protim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I actually wanted to, to follow up on, on, on your previous comments of the great work of Mr. McGarrett. And I think you really laid out, um, the, the enormity of, of that position and, and what it takes to serve that role for, for the city of Tallahassee. So I, I kind of want to address maybe the elephant in the room is, what happens next, Mr. City Manager? And I, the last time, uh, we had such a, a high-profile position replaced, it was probably the police chief. And we went through, um, that process. So I'm looking to, is there a process for a, a replacement? What, what are we going to do when Rob McGarrett is gone?
What we're going to miss him, that's the first thing we're going to do. But in all seriousness, the, the process is underway. And I think that probably the closest comparable process is when we replace the underground utilities and public infrastructure position. So we, we look broadly. We are a preferred employer. We're on the map. And so, we've already advertised the position. We did that right away. We've received a lot of good qualified candidates. Interviews have already begun. And so, we hope to, to move forward as quickly as possible. We do realize that, um, hurricane season, which is a really big pressure point for us locally, we, we don't want to be without a general manager during hurricane season. So, um, the, the feedback and the response to the advertisement, which was done through our normal means and methods, but also through our state and national associations, has been well-received. And so, that process is well underway.
Thank you. And hurricane season, that was, that was my concern as well. So I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Great. Motion's on table. Seeing no further comment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, five zero. We are on item number 13.04. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, sir. We're in a roll tonight. I've got to say, this is a
Thank you, Rob.
a really good item. Um, you've heard some comments from members of the public earlier tonight. And you'll recall in March, at your March 24th meeting, you directed staff to develop a policy addressing the use of single-use plastics and expanded polystream, commonly referred to as Styrofoam, for food and beverage service that the city uses on the city property. That's certainly in, in line with the strategic plan objective to be a leader in environmental stewardship. And this item provides a policy for your consideration. This effort was led by Adam Jacobs, our Sustainability and Resilience Division Director. He works hand and glove with the Ben Ojatayo. And they worked with our partners in Sustainable Tallahassee, Sierra Club, League of Women Voters, and others to develop the policy. And I think you've already heard tonight that it's very well-received. And, and I will say, from my point of view, I think they did a great job turning this fast. Oftentimes, these efforts take quite a bit of time to get right. And, and they've turned it around very quickly for your consideration tonight. Adam is with us, and, and I'd like him just to share a few words. I want you to, you, you've heard his name, and I think you've seen his face, and he's, you know, he's been around. He does a great job for us. He's been with the city for many, many years. I think he might have joined the city after Cynthia referenced the April 1st, 2008 date, by the way. I think we, we're, we're the beneficiary of that date that Cynthia talked about earlier. And that's when we created the EPR department, when we really were doubling down on the environment and our efforts toward that. And so, Adam's with us. And Adam, can you share a few words with us tonight?
Adam, before you do so, you did do a tremendous job on this piece of legislation, and, and I thank you.
Thank you. Well, thank you, Commissioners, Mr. City Manager, for the opportunity to present on the proposed single-use plastics policy. Following the city commission's direction to develop this policy, staff engaged with representatives from several community organizations. They've been named, but I'll repeat them, Sustainable Tallahassee, Sierra Club, League of Women Voters. We'd like to thank them for their significant input in the development of this policy. We also coordinated with multiple, multiple departments across the city, working closely with those that would be most impacted by the policy, including our Parks, Recreation, Neighborhood Affairs Department, as well as Environmental Services and Facilities. Single-use plastics, plastics that are disposed of after one use, continue to be an environmental concern across the globe. For the most part, these plastics do not biodegrade, but instead break down into smaller pieces that can impact our soil and water bodies. Add into these concerns is research that shows that the more, the majority of these plastics are not recycled and instead make their way to our landfills. Additionally, industry standards, industry studies have associated plastic production with the creation of greenhouse gas emissions that contribute to global climate change. Building off of the momentum of tonight's announcement of the city's LEED Gold Certification, the city has an opportunity to continue to lead in our efforts to reduce our impacts on the environment. Over the years, the city has implemented a number of initiatives to reduce the use of single-use plastics, including our reusable grocery bag program and our reusable water bottle campaigns. This policy would continue those efforts as we join 28 other Florida local governments that have enacted similar ordinances and policies to restrict the use of plastics, whether focused on straws and stirrers or expanded to include the use of single-use plastics for food and beverage-related services. This policy would restrict the distribution and use of single-use plastics for food and beverage-related services, which is one of the activities that is most often associated with the use of single-use plastics, and would focus on promoting alternatives that are more readily biodegradable. The policy would restrict these plastics on city property and at city events, and would apply to city businesses, concessions on city property or at city events, and for private events on city property with over 50 attendees. The policy contemplates exemptions for ADA requests and for use during declared emergencies. Upon adoption, staff would coordinate not only with city departments, but with our community partners, with local businesses, contractors, and others that would be potentially impacted by the policy. And we would provide the resources that would educate them about alternative, alternative options, alternative resources, and as I said, plastics that are more readily biodegradable. Ultimately, adopting the policy will reduce the amount of plastic used for city activities and therefore reduce the amount of plastic that makes its way into our environment. We are recommending option one, that the city commission adopt a single-use plastics policy that restricts the distribution and use of single-use plastics for food and beverages, services on city property and at city events. And I can answer any questions you may have.
Adam, thank you again for all the hard work that you did. Very rarely do I refer back to my previous life as a county commissioner, but I was very proud to be part of the leadership team that passed a similar mission, a measure at the county. I was proud to bring this before the city commission and look forward to strongly supporting your recommended action. And again, things speaks very well when you have organizations, members of the public coming in on, what a great job that you did. We really appreciate it. Let's open it up for questions, comments. Commissioner Williams-Cox.
I'd like to move staff recommendation.
Been properly moved by Commissioner Diane Williams-Cox for staff recommendation option number one. I will take the pleasure of seconding that motion. Any other further comment?
Yes, sir.
Please move forward.
I want to, um, thank Meta, Mida, I know I'm not saying it right, Calder, and Grant Gilheart, and League of Women Voters, Sierra Club, and all of everyone who, we've worked on this quite a while. I remember meeting Meta and some of the other League of Women Voters in my office. Meta provided us with a bill drafting, because she was a retired bill drafter. And she provided us with the language to, to begin this with. And so, I'm just glad that we're landing this plane finally. Thank you for your patience with us, and thank you for staff for working with, with our citizens and our citizens working with our staff. When I got the call yesterday from Grant, I kind of answered my phone. I didn't know it was Grant, because, you know, he called me on, from a different number. And so, when I answered, I, you know, I was kind of hedging what was about to happen. Because usually the day before a commission meeting, I'm getting complaints. But I got a, I got a compliment, and he complimented staff, and that made me smile. So I wanted to share that with you, that Grant and Meta and the, and the crew are, are all pleased with, as you've heard tonight, pleased with the work that you all have done. And pleasure meeting you, Adam. You know, I always call on a banner. But I now have you, Adam. That, that let you know, that could be very dangerous. But thank you for the work that you all have done, and I'm very proud of where, where we're going. When I first brought this to the commission a while ago, I lost some friends. Because you know that there are some folks out there who don't necessarily think this is what we ought to be doing. But that's okay. I got them back because they needed something else. And so, we, you know, so I got my friends back. So, so thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor Protim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a huge step forward for our community. Appreciate, Mr. Mayor, bringing it back up. And I did want to recognize Commissioner Williams-Cox bringing this up. A couple of years ago, we got a little distracted with COVID and, and focused on, you know, the immediate needs. But I think we're, we're back in the chambers. We are all up here, and we're ready to get back to work and really deliver some accomplishments for our community. So strongly looking forward to supporting this.
Excellent. Seeing no further comment. Rightfully so. Commissioner Williams-Cox has properly made the motion. I have seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, five zero. We are on item number 13.05. Mr. Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. This item is a city commission policy that's being brought for review. Staff has reviewed it, made some edits to our industrial revenue bond issuance policy. It's been in place for several decades. The legislative format is attached for your review. As I mentioned to a couple of you in my briefings, what may look like a lot of changes is actually limited. So items one through eight were moved, so you see a big section stricken and a big section added. But we, we did make a few changes, consulted with a couple of departments as we went through it. One of the additions to it also was to add a sunset provision so that on a, on a regular basis, it'll come back every five years like all of our other policies. So if you have questions, I'll entertain them, but it's here for your approval of the updated city commission policy 240.
Excellent. Commissioner Richardson, you recognize?
I would move, Mr. Mayor, that we accept staff recommendation for option number one.
Second. It's been properly moved. Um, option number one by Commissioner Richardson, seconded by Commissioner Williams-Cox. Seeing no further comment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes four oh, with Commissioner Mantle out of chambers. We are on item number 13.06. Mr. Sutton, welcome back.
When I got here the first time, it was good afternoon. Now it's this evening. Good evening, everybody. As requested by the city commission during the last commission meeting, I'm here to provide a presentation on the Office of Inspector General's audit of the city's ethical culture. First, let me provide a little background on the audit. The audit was conducted to meet the internal auditing standards put out by the Institute of Internal Auditors. It requires we periodically assess the ethical condition of the organization. The last time a similar audit was conducted was in 2008. So it's been quite a long time since the last time this was done. The objectives of the audit were to determine whether the city employees understood the city's ethical values and could apply those values to their daily activities, and to determine the extent of compliance with key ethics-related policies and procedures. To accomplish the objectives, we reviewed and evaluated city policies that impact the ethical culture and conducted a survey of all city employees. Since the last time this audit was conducted was over 10 years ago, I feel like it's important to talk about some of the things that happened in those intervening 10 years, both the good and the bad. As can be seen on this slide, there's been a lot of turnover in the leadership of the city during that 10 years. But there's more than that. There's been the establishment of an independent ethics board and an independent ethics officer. But on the bad side, there's been an FBI investigation into city officials, as well as the indictment and admission of guilt by a former city commissioner. There's been a mandate for annual ethics training for all city employees. There's been a strengthening and expansion of the city's ethics code that was taken on by the members of the commission here. And there were several complaints with the State Ethics Commission regarding some high-level city officials as well. The, the most important part of the audit, I feel like, that gives insight into what employees think about the ethics within the city was the survey we conducted. The survey was designed to assure respondents were anonymous, so they would feel free to answer honestly. We sent out approximately 3,000 surveys and received 821 responses for approximately a 27% response rate, which in surveys, that's, that's not a terrible response rate. It's not as high as we would have liked, but it was pretty good. The first section of the survey related to evaluating employees' familiarity with the city's efforts to city's efforts to promote an ethical culture. As you can see, all four questions in 2008 had a very good response. The employees were familiar with the city's efforts, but it was even better this time. So I feel like that's an area where we've been very strong, and we concluded overall that employees are very aware of the city's efforts to promote an ethical culture. The next section of the survey related to employees' ability to demonstrate ethical decision-making. In this part of the audit, we asked several questions intended to evaluate employees' ability to apply ethical concepts and decision-making in various scenarios. As you can see from the various bar graphs related to this section, the results of the 2019 survey showed that once again, there was an improvement from the 2008 results. Now, I will say that none of these questions are really playing in gray areas when it comes to ethical decision-making, but it was very good to see that employees were making the right decisions when it comes to ethical situations. Third section of the audit looked at employees' perception of the ethical culture of the city. This section, as would be expected based on what's happened in the preceding 10 years, has showed employees' perception of the ethical environment has decreased, but still showed what can be considered a fairly normal-looking bell curve. So if you look at those blue bars, they have gone down from the previous survey, but they haven't shifted all the way to a negative side. And so I consider that a reasonable response. And honestly, if there hadn't been a movement, I would have questioned the results of the In the final section of the survey, what I consider to be the most important part of the survey asks whether employees have firsthand knowledge of unethical or illegal behavior. And from the bar graph on the left-hand side, you can see that in 2008, 35% of employees reported they had direct personal knowledge. In 2019, that's gone down to 18%. So I think that's a very strong indicator that from the employee's standpoint, the ethical environment and ethical culture is improving. Now, just as good as those results are, I think the next slide is an area where we need to improve. We asked for those people that did say they saw something, did they report it to anyone? And 75% of the respondents said they did not report it if they saw something. That's an area where I think we really need to make efforts to improve. And the last section of the audit addresses the observations and recommendations that we have from the audit. The first two bullets, I think, are somewhat interrelated and intended to address the issue in that very last graph that we saw, trying to get employees to report things if they noticed them. The first recommendation has to do with the city manager and I working together to develop anti-fraud and whistleblower commission-level policies to make a strong statement from the city commission that these are areas that are important. And the second bullet deals with continued communication from city leadership of the importance of ethical behavior and reporting things that are unethical or illegal when you see them. The next issue has already been touched on by previous city commission meetings, and it deals with the ethics training tied to employees' cost-of-living adjustments. Right now, that is based on a city manager directive, and in the audit, we're recommending that that be codified into a policy if it is continued to be the practice of the city. The fourth issue is related to what's known as secondary employment forms. Employees are required to complete secondary employment forms to disclose those employers that they work for to help the city ensure that there isn't a conflict of interest between their second job and what they do as a public employee. We reviewed those forms for the ones that were submitted, and we noted 12 of the 40 that we reviewed were working for employers that were also city vendors. And there was no indication as to whether that had been reviewed for a conflict of interest or not. So we think that, we believe in making a recommendation that those should be reviewed, and if there is a employer that is a city vendor, should be evaluated for a conflict of interest and noted on those forms to clearly demonstrate that we have considered that. The fifth issue related to procurement evaluation committees, RFP and RFQ committees. Each of those committee members is required to complete a conflict-of-interest form to disclose if they have a conflict of interest or attest that they do not have a conflict of interest with any of the vendors that are involved in that acquisition or procurement. Our review of several purchases showed that those forms were not always completed, so we're recommending that an emphasis be made to ensure that those forms are completed and that if there is a conflict of interest, those people not be included in the committees. And then finally, we noted that the city's procurement practices do not include a vendor code of ethics, and we are recommending that vendors be held to a code of ethics and the consequences of violating that code of ethics be included and disclosed as part of any acquisition or purchase. With that, I've finished my presentation, and I'm available for any questions that you might have.
Mr. Inspector General, overall, in layman's terms, what do you think about the audit, how it came out?
I think it was a good audit. I think we have some solid recommendations. I think the survey showed we have some areas that we need to work on, but it shows that I think we're doing a good job overall in what we're trying to do to be an ethical organization.
Excellent. So this is an information-only item, but if we wanted to make a motion to accept the audit, that would be the proper motion or whatever direction. Let's open it up for questions and comments. Commissioner Williams-Cox, Commissioner Richardson, Commissioner Porter, Mayor Pro Tim.
I move acceptance of the audit as presented.
Motion on the table?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Commissioner Williams-Cox, you still have the floor.
Thank you, and I want to commend the Inspector General's office in a thorough investigation, evaluation, audit. Having worked in state government, there were some items that I guess I just took for granted that they were already in place, such as outside employment for all employees because, you know, the state of Florida requires that for state employees, that is. Also, conflict of interest, those forms are also required if you're going to participate on an evaluation team for RFP, RFQ. And during the certification process, I believe for state vendors, there is something in there that speaks to the code of ethics. So I think that the findings are findings that just, it's time. It's time has come, and we need to make sure that we button it up, and I agree with the findings. I do believe that in the instance where folks are knowledgeable about unethical behavior and not reporting it or not doing anything, may not be doing anything about it, I think it needs to be determined why that is or created an avenue so that it can be reported anonymously so that people will be more willing to come forward. Again, that's something that used to be done, I guess it still is being done at the state government level. And so I think that too is a time that has come. However, that may mean that something that's not unethical, but is suspicious, that means that someone has to sort that out. But I think it's okay. It's better to have it reported and you sort it out than it not be reported.
Absolutely.
So I think that all of those recommendations are things whose time has come in city government that currently exist in other governmental levels. So congratulations on the work that you all have done, and congratulations to the city of Tallahassee as we work harder to become better and continue to grow. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just very briefly, I want to commend Dennis on the work that you all have done, doing the survey, collecting the results, presenting the results here this afternoon. We've come a long ways, and I want to commend the city manager for the leadership that he has provided in getting us to where we are today. Are we perfect? No, we're not. I don't know that there's a perfect organization anywhere. You know, these kinds of things.
It's in heaven.
Yeah, in heaven, in heaven. You know, these kinds of things happen because we're all fallible human beings, but that's why we put policies in place to address those instances where fallible human beings do the wrong thing. And I think we have that here, but what I commend the city manager and his leadership team for is the emphasis that they have put on the ethical culture of our organization. I mean, to go so far as to tie a person's cost-of-living increase in their salary to them having ethical training and demonstrating that they understand the ethical environment of the city and what's required of them in that regard, I thought was tremendous, and sends a clear signal to where the commitment of the commission and the city manager and staff are in that regard. If I could add an amendment to your motion, Commissioner Williams-Cox, and that would be certainly to have the city manager come back to us with policy recommendations for addressing the recommendations that have come out of this report. Is that?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, Commissioner, thank you for that, and Inspector General can speak to this as well if he would like. That's part of the report.
Oh, okay.
That's a typical outcome that, you know, the findings, the conclusions, and then any recommendations and action items, and they're numerous. In fact, they reflect what Dennis shared regarding the whistleblower, the fraud piece, the conflagration of policy. That is in place, that's part of the audit. The auditor's office will then do follow-ups periodically, you know, to monitor the conclusion of that. So that is in motion already.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure we weren't just accepting the report, that there was some follow-up action on these recommendations, and if that's the fact, if that is indeed the fact, I'm.
That's part of it, yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, Commissioner, as part of every audit, we have what's called an action plan that management develops to address each one of our recommendations.
Okay.
And in this audit report, management developed an action plan, and I believe with all action plan steps to be completed by the end of this year.
Perfect, okay.
Commissioner Porter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for your presentation for this work. I agree with the comments that have been made about it's a great step that we've even completed this audit after so long. I think there was a lot of good in the findings, definitely some things that were concerning. I think there's some things that we could, would be interesting to, for our next audit, you know, because we were using, I know we were comparing questions to the previous audit. But there were certain things that weren't captured that would be interesting to know, you know. Even, you know, some of the terms were left to interpretation, I mean intentionally, you know, when we talk about city leadership, if we're talking about executive staff or, you know, electeds or appointeds or whatever. I think most pressing for me is definitely, I do see in the action plan, the completion date being by the end of this year. I think most pressing with me, for me definitely, I want to express as a priority, is action on the whistleblower and anti-fraud policies, but specifically the whistleblower policies as well as outside employment forms and the evaluation committee's conflict-of-interest forms. So I don't know how far along we are on that process, but I would like to see, and, you know, I'm not directing this, but as soon as possible, have those come back to us because we're, you know, that's ongoing issues. I would just feel more comfortable if we could prioritize those perhaps.
Yes, Commissioner, with those two policies, the city manager and I have already discussed this, and we anticipate bringing it back right after break.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. That's all for me.
Mayor Pro Tim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Inspector General, for the presentation. I'm really glad that you presented this audit today because I think it's important that the public, one, knows who you are, knows what your role is. You know, I don't know if we can slide another chair up here, but it's such an important position because not only are you our watchdog, so to speak, you're the person who can make recommendations that keep us above reproach, and I think you've done that pretty skillfully here because not only did you take the survey results and saying, it looks like too many people aren't willing to speak up, it's why not? Maybe that's because there's not whistleblower protections, maybe they have some sort of concern, and that's exactly what we need coming out of the Inspector General's office. I asked you in our meeting about the employees who work for outside vendors. They actually do fill out a form right now, so nobody's hiding anything, but there's just not the check to make sure that there isn't a conflict or that extra set. And I think that's meaningful for people to know because what you're saying is not necessarily implicating wrongdoing, but you're showing a way that we can make sure wrongdoing doesn't happen, and we have that checks in balance, so.
Try and head it off before it happens.
Before it happens, exactly. And I think to Commissioner Porter's point about when these will be implemented and Mr. City Manager, I personally would like to say every time we do an audit, to get a presentation from the auditor so we know what's happening, see what the recommendations are, and then have that follow-up if it's six months or, you know, December, whenever these are due, and the audit let us know what was accomplished. So we can continue to be public-facing, always show the public, we're reviewing the audits and we're making the necessary changes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Dennis, I too want to say thank you, and I also want to thank the city manager. Under his leadership over the past two and a half years, I think that we have made great strides. We have created a strategic plan for the city of Tallahassee, which stresses an ethical work environment moving forward, which I think is reflected in the numbers. This body has passed the strongest ethics reform package in the history of the city of Tallahassee and one of the strongest, if not the strongest, of all municipalities in the state of Florida. In fact, I think that we set a standard for other municipalities to learn from as well. You are correct. We have work to do, very proud that we have transformed the auditor's office into an inspector general's office. These are all positive steps forward, and we look forward to seeing the recommendations coming back from your office, Mr. Manager, and being able to continue to move forward.
If you all indulge me just one second, there was one point that I wanted to make that I did omit in my presentation. If you could bring the slides back up, I'd appreciate it. There was one slide that I really, one graph that I thought was very telling, and that's the one in the bottom right-hand corner, and I kind of passed over that in my haste to get through the presentation. But one of the questions that we asked dealt with the leadership changes that happened in 2017 and 2018, and whether employees felt like what's happened since then with the new leadership is improving the ethical culture. And as you can see, 75% of the employees feel like we're moving in the right direction.
Right.
I thought that was a strong statement, and I apologize for omitting that in my initial presentation.
No worries, no worries. With that, we have a motion on the table for staff recommendation, which is to accept the audit report made by Commissioner Williams-Cox, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Seeing no further comment, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, 5-0. We are on 13.07. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item was added to your agenda following the vote and the positive by our officers and investigators, members of the Police Benevolent Association. They voted to support the contract offer that had been agreed to by negotiating teams. As you know, this contract has been negotiated for some time. In fact, it began in 2020. It was a difficult one, I think, brought about by COVID, the financial impact, but ultimately, I believe we've reached a very good outcome. I would like to recognize Richard Murphy. He's president of the Big Ben Chapter of the Police Benevolent Association. I believe we worked in good faith, and we reached a good outcome. And I would like to invite Roal Lavin up to just share a few highlights and say this, the agreement is for three years, which is typical. It ends September 2023, and it's designed to enhance retention and recruitment, some of the things that we hear about most often. We have 410 sworn law enforcement positions that protect our community every day. It's an extremely difficult job, and it was important to make sure that we met those marks of retaining the officers that we have, but also the ability to recruit new ones. And so it's complicated, these are complicated agreements, and I think it would be for the benefit of everybody if Assistant City Manager Lavin could hit a few points, and then also if I could carve out some time and have our treasurer clerk talk about the pension piece of that because it is a big piece of the competition. the pension piece of that, because that is a, a big piece of the compensation.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, Mayor, and Commissioners. As the manager said, the PBA Officers and Investigators Collective Bargaining Unit approved the contract that was put forth to them last Thursday by a vote of 86% in, in favor of, of the contract. And the contract that was presented was consistent with the parameters that had been offered by the city commission as we went through this negotiation process. And so in '21, which is the current fiscal year that we're in, there are no pay adjustments consistent with what we were trying to do as part of the three-year contract. And then in the second two years, year two and year three, there is a 2% across-the-board increase, an ATB of 2% for all members. In years two and three, there is a four-and-a-half step progression for all members that are eligible to step, and those that are not eligible to increase via the step process will get a 3% increase in '22 and '23. There is also a reduction in the pension contribution, which is something that we heard a lot from the PBA. And so the pension contribution for all members will decrease to 10.99%. Currently, the contributions, depending on when they were hired, is either 13.69 or 11.25. So that's a 2.7% decrease or 0.26% decrease in pension contribution. The parental leave is also in the contract and consistent with what we did with the fire union. Any member of the collective bargaining unit that took parental leave starting October 1st, they'll be credited all that leave, those leave hours as part of this contract. The other thing that the contract does is implements a Plan D pension for all new hires effective October 1st, 2021. Their pension contribution rate will also be 10.99%. And one of the things of, of Plan D, and Mr. Cook can, can talk about this, is that in order for the members to achieve the full accrual of 81%, they would have to work the 27 years because the accrual rate has changed to 3%. Now, I don't know if Mr. Cook would like to add anything else.
Just one thing I wanted to make clear on that. The provisions as described require, one, to work 27 years to maximize your pension
benefit, but normal retirement can still be taken after 25 years. So it doesn't change the number of years that the officer has to work to retire, but it does take it to 27 years to maximize your benefit. So Mr. Leland earlier asked about our general employees. General employees can retire, normal retirement after 33 years, but they have not yet maximized their benefit. They would have to work more years to, to get their maximum benefit. Actually, in general employee's case, that's about 36 years. So similar concept across all of our plans, that the terms here that is described by Mr. Lavin are identical to what we have in place for our fire, our fire folks. Not that the two are required to be identical, but our concepts are consistent across our employee groups.
Excellent. Let's open it up for discussion and questions. Commissioner Williams Cox.
First, I'd like to make the motion that we accept the staff recommendation.
Second.
It's been properly moved by Commissioner Williams Cox and seconded by Commissioner Richardson. You have the floor.
Thank you. And I think that a lot of hard work, no, I don't think, I know a lot of hard work has gone into making this happen, and I think that we've settled in, as I've, I've heard someone say today, the best possible place with our, with our current situation. So I want to thank, thank you guys for the work that you've done to, to be good stewards of the taxpayers' dollars, and also for the PBA for working very closely with you to, to land here. I think it's important to note that there was a split because there is one, one part of, of policing that accepted the original deal, and this is now the, I think you said it, the investigators and officers.
Officers and investigators.
Right. So, so there was, there was, there was a split, and I think it's, it's important to note that, that half of them did it early on. But now we're all, we got the family back together. We're, we're together now, and great job on doing this to help keep our city safe.
Commissioner Richardson for comment.
Yeah, I again want to, again commend the city manager and his leadership team for the job that they have done in carrying this forward. I know it wasn't easy, but for those of you who might not know, this is what the collective bargaining process is all about. You continue to go back and forth, you give some, you take some, until you can arrive at a product that everyone, or at least the vast majority, can agree on. 86% of the officers and investigators that voted on this contract approved it, and that says a lot to me. And it's something that we have come to agreement on, and now we're ready to move forward and continue the great service that our men and women of law enforcement provide for our commit, our, our community. And show them how much we appreciate what they do for this community in keeping us safe. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any other comment? Yeah, Mayor Protim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Negotiations are always difficult, so congratulations to your, you and your team for getting this across the finish line. I, I know, you know, I just want to be on the record, there's still a lot that I believe that needs to change in law enforcement, not just in our community, but across the country, and those conversations are actively happening. But I don't want to conflate that with a conversation about an employee that shows up for work every day and does a duty that they're asked to do, and their ability to make ends meet and have a good-paying job. So I, I'm happy to, that the, the police were able to negotiate a deal that they felt comfortable with, and I'm happy to support them in this contract. And, but aside from that, I think there's larger conversations that continue to need to be had, but we don't need to act like it's about supporting an individual officer or not. Let's support the officers for, for the work that we ask them to do, and then let's look at how we can ask them to do work differently so our whole community can move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. So I intend to support motion on the table as well. I want to thank our team for all the hard work and dedication that you put in. I want to thank my colleagues for their diligence moving forward. I want to thank Richard Murphy and his leadership team from the PBA for, for working with us through all of this. And I too want to stand up and say thank you to the men and women of Tallahassee Police Department that do wake up each and every day to serve our community, and we have a couple of our officers that are here in chambers with us. We do appreciate it. I echo the comments of my colleagues, but at the same time, I want to also point out that I'm particularly proud that the paid parental leave has been negotiated in. This is an item that I brought before the city commission. We adopted it for general service employees. It was negotiated into the fire contract, and now it is being negotiated into the police contract as well. So everyone is covered in the fact like fire. It is retroactive back to October 1st. I'm very happy. Thank you very much for that. With that, motion on the table is for approval. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously five zero. Mr. Manager, do we have any other business coming before the city commission at this time?
No, sir.
We are on unengaged business speakers. Mr. Clerk, do we have any speakers?
Mayor, we do. We've got about a half dozen or so.
Great.
We'll start with Stanley Sims. He'll be followed by Anthony DiMarco.
Before you start my time, Mr. Cook, let me get a point of clarification, Mr. Mayor, so I'll know. When we had the budget meeting, I arrived here when the last speaker was speaking, and I filled out my card. Then I was told I was unable to speak because I arrived too late. In previous meetings, when people have arrived late, you all let them speak. In equity, I wasn't afforded that.
Mr. Sims, I'm not familiar with it. I apologize for the problem.
I know, I just want to let, put it on the record, so Mr. Matt.
Mr. Cook's office will be more than happy to discuss afterwards, moving forward to make sure that we don't have that situation again.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor.
Your name and address for the record, please.
Stanley Sims, still paying that big mortgage at 1320 Avondale Way. I want to talk about the budget. Anybody in this room pay increase went up $100,000 over the last eight years? Raise your hand, Reese. Yours did. Over the last eight years, according to public records that I have received, his salary went up almost $100,000 over the last past eight years. Why am I bringing that point up? When you all were discussing the budget about pay, when you were running, Commissioner Cox, and you were running mayor, I told you it was deplorable that our city employees do not make $10 an hour. You all's fog it like they make $12 an hour, and you trying to raise them to 15. According to public records request, we have over 200 city employees that do not make $12 an hour. And then you all, I'm gonna go down my road, my son, why is it if you could cut grass at the golf course and make $9 an hour, $9 an hour, and you can cut grass for the beautification team and you make $10 an hour? Cutting grass should be cutting grass. And here's what gets me. Why do we have people at a city-operated things that we charge money for that generates revenue? Why do we got people down there that not making $10 or $12 an hour already? Why do we have my son getting up at 6:00 in the morning, almost putting a gun in his face, and we still don't have security at J. Gaither? Our employees need raises. Thank you, Commissioner Cox. You can give a scenario. You were the one that architect, gave out 16 people had over $50,000 in raise. You all was doing it better than Google. We need money, money to pay your utility bill. See, you don't have those things, and when you play with our money, talking about bonuses, and, and you give us a raise and then you jack up the insurance, we pay your insurance.
You're at two and a half.
When you make $240,000 a year, you ain't worried about those little mechanisms. I am. My son drive a little Honda, it's 18, but he want a newer car like everybody else. He want a BMW like his daddy. He work two jobs, and he should not live below the poverty line.
Thank you, Mr. Sims. Our next speaker.
Next is Anthony DiMarco.
Your name and address for the record, please.
Anthony DiMarco, Tallahassee, Florida. I just wanted to speak on TPD's use of force policy, request that we have an open review of that. In reading through some of their different policies in Order 60, Use of Force, they define passive resistance, and it states that to me passive resistance requires no to little physical resistance, which means that for someone to be deemed passively resisting, they don't need to be showing any physical resistance. The authorization for use of force states that they can use use of force if, if an individual is showing passive resistance. So those two items right there open up the door for TPD to use force against someone that is being non-physically resistant. I think that is like, needs immediate attention. On another, another topic, so TPD and public records requests. Muck Rock is a, it's like a record request clearinghouse. TPD has a 29.17% success rate in returning public records requests. Phenomenally low. There was a 2017 records request that was put in asking about their social media surveillance policies and capabilities. It returned a contract from WeLink, which is a location-based search by keywords, metrics changed dynamically based on keyword searches, your user demographics, sentiment and engagement trends and metrics. You can choose custom, custom timeframe for data access, quickly identify top influencers, top keywords, top, top shares and other top trends, filter social posts based on different metrics, unlimited alerts based on keyword influence and sentiment. What that equals is 24-hour surveillance. WeLink is a commercial product. It's not a, it's not a law enforcement, it's a marketing product.
You're at about two and a half minutes.
Thank you, sir. Also returned an aggregator, which is open source intelligence information gathered from publicly available blogs, forums, and social media channels. They have an unlimited account with them. Magnet Forensics, data recovery slash IMZ catcher. If you don't know what IMZ catcher, that's like, they can kind of just pull out the data off your cell phone. I put in the same, that request, initial request from 2017 was filed in 23 days. I put it, request in April 7th, and I'm still going back and forth. I've been told.
You're at three minutes. Thank you, Mr. DiMarco. Wrap up your comments, please.
I've been told that I've been, that they have sent all information available, and I asked them if my request returned any responsive records per statute, and I got an email back immediately saying, oh, we're looking into it again.
Thank you, Mr. DiMarco. Our next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Freddie Miller, followed by Whitfield Leland.
Your name and address for the record, please.
Freddie Miller, 6001 Shamut Street, Tallahassee, Florida. First of all, I would like to say I'm really pleased with the commissioners and the way that they displayed all the stuff went on for us the emancipation weekend. It was, I saw all of you guys hanging out, so that was cool. So Mr. Cox down there dancing and everything. But what I'm here for is, and I want to thank you, Mayor, for the phone call I got yesterday from your secretary. That was, that was nice. Thank you. But I'm here to speak on the Orange Avenue South Side project. I'm not really so informed on that project that, for us, Orange Avenue Housing, that it's going to be redeveloped, as you guys calling it, but I think it's way deeper than that for, as I'm concerned, because I grew up there. And I looked at some of the plans, I didn't look at all of them, but I looked at the plans that I did see. It was going to be a lot of people, it's going to be displaced because like they only go up to three-bedroom houses or apartments over there. It's going to be, I think it's going to be very congested and not like a family setting like it is right now. And there's no recreation that I saw over there for us. The youth, we talking about like from nine to 16-year-olds to have things to do to keep them out of the prison pipeline that's going on. And also the project that, the park that, I think you, Commissioner Richardson was overseeing.
No, I'm not overseeing.
Well, the one that's over there behind the King's store on, like.
Right, right.
I think that's going to be like a waste of money because all it's going to do is set up a haven for the drug addicts and the homeless or whatever, to have somewhere else to go besides Crouch Street where they already were before. And I think they're just going to move over there. I think we need to just put more emphasis on the recreation for the youth to have some type of structural things to do for us during the summer especially, when things heat up for gangs and things like that, because they don't have anywhere to go. They got the Jack Colain place up on Paul Russell Road, but that's not close enough to South City. Orange Avenue, Texas Street, Puttin Drive, those, that area right there really needs some baseball fields and some gymnasium, even some YMCA's or.
About 15 seconds.
Or boys and girls clubs. And I looked, tried to research the boys and girls clubs here, and we're really liking that for after-school care, homework, tutoring, and mentoring these young kids. So I really hope that sometime in some session that you guys hold that we will address those issues.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Miller. We appreciate you coming out.
All right, thank you. And I see y'all at the Marloody King Parade.
There we go. Our next speaker.
Whitfield Leland.
Your name and address for the record, please.
Whitfield Leland, 754 West 7th Avenue. I'm speaking on the use of force policy because I'm trying to get understanding of who makes that policy. Like who comes, who says, or who actually put that together? Is it a group of people, one? Is it a group of people, one person, this commission? Because as we all know, a couple weeks ago, Jacquez Kirkland had seven minutes of reality, that's what I call it, seven minutes of reality. What we seen before TPD released the tape was seven second, not seven minutes, but correct me, seven seconds of one of our police officers hitting Jacquez on the leg in a defenseless position. After reviewing, after reviewing the tape, I looked at all of them, and I still, because I've dealt with, been in that situation, I still don't see where that use of force with him being struck with the nightstick was justified. And my question is, because we gonna make this a hot topic, like at the end of the day, nobody, what we seen, and the 26 minutes before all the body cam fell off, he aced that sobriety test, even though he was intoxicated, we will give him that, but he aced it. Like he complied for 26 minutes. So in between those 26 minutes and those, the last minutes that they came up, like are we really looking out to see what happened? You know what I'm saying? Are we just gonna sit here and ride and say, okay, they was justified? And another thing, we spent all this money on body cam, all this money on body cam. Why in the hell, if they getting one little piece of altercation, it just fall off, we can't get none, we can't accept it? Sometimes even in some situations, the officer forget to turn the body cam on, or Chief Holmes has told me, out of his own mouth, and I hope he listen, because I talked to them, oh, the battery died. Like, all these excuses, but we steady spending money on the roof, we spending money to put a whole new police department in the city of Tallahassee, but when our residents and citizens need the equipment and the body cam that we pay for, it's always an excuse why it's not being, well, why it wasn't in use at that point in time. So I, we need to look clarity on how we can go and look at this use of force policies, because the policy stating, the policy, the General Order 63 in itself, General Order 63 in itself, don't justify this. And if it does justify this, then y'all need to break it down and layman terms, so we can understand it, so we'll know what not to do. You know what I'm saying? Because I talked to the individual, I talked to, he was already had one handcuffs in before y'all took him to, before they took him to the ground. So they wasn't trying to handcuff him, they was trying to get an arm from up under him. At the end of the day, though, if we do see this misconduct and then...
You're at three minutes.
Can I get two more seconds?
Wrap up your thoughts.
So, my thing is this, my thing is this, at the end of the day, we seen one part of it. We as citizens ain't, like I said, we not, we not trying to be aggressive with the police, we want a relationship. But when we see something wrong, and then we go back and read the policy and the policy don't add up, and then we still asking questions, and I've asked to have a meeting with you and the chief several times, and y'all don't give us those meetings, how do y'all expect us to react?
Thank you, Mr. Leland. Our next speaker.
Next is James Parker, and then Michael McLaughlin.
Thank you so much for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Mayor, city commissioners, staff, thanks very much for letting me speak this afternoon. My name's James Parker, retired U.S. Coast Guard commander, and I live at 812 East 6th Avenue in the Capitol City.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you, sir. Last year, the association, Lafayette Park Neighborhood Association, which I am also a member of and on their traffic safety committee, submitted a formal resolution to you, to all of you, with public safety concerns resulting from very high rates of excessive speeds on E6, specifically E6, but some on E7th Avenue. A little bit of the history on that, years ago, the city, in an effort to increase east-west traffic flow, converted this eight tenths of a mile stretch of both E6 and 7th avenues from two-way residential streets with a 25 mile-per-hour limit to one-way streets with an increased 30 mile-an-hour speed. These two streets, despite their previous and continued residential nature, without prior communication with the residents, were designated major collectors. Over the years, with minimal enforcement and no in-place traffic calming devices, traffic speed continually has increased. The city's most recent study for 6th Avenue reflected an 85 percentile speed of 42 miles per hour. Over 75% of the vehicles that travel on that road do so in excess of the posted speed limit. They did a crash study in conjunction with the speed study over a 20-month period, which provided 38 crashes with, over a third of those with injuries, which is a result of the higher speed impacts. Our formal resolution requested installation of a raised intersection at E6 and Terrace Avenue. Our well-researched and documented follow-up letters to you outlined, the request was based both on the hazardous conditions present at that intersection, as well as an extensive sound research and appropriateness of the effectiveness of various different types of traffic calming devices. I know you're facing this same problem in other areas of the city, and hopefully this could be an area where we learn from, because this was done years ago, and we're reaping the problems with it today, so.
You have about 30 seconds left.
Okay. Federal Highway Administration, the Institution of Transportation Engineers, Florida Department of Transportation, all completed decades of traffic calming experience and practice studies. And basically what they've come up with is, unless there's a vertical rise, such as in speed humps, bumps, or raised intersection, they have minimal effect on controlling traffic speeds. So as I'll skip down here and finish up, we, we approve the cities, I know the city's involved in some current activities right now to adjust that situation on E6, and the association is in support of the activities that they're involved in. However, we request that they incorporate the raised intersection, which was in our formal resolution to you all, as well as a reduction of the 25 mile hour, actually it's a restoration back to the 25 mile hour speed limit. We ask that you incorporate those into these plans that are being implemented today. Alternatively, if that doesn't work for us, we request they incorporate into the city's future plans, in the event that these modifications they're making to the street fail to reduce the 85 percentile speed to a current acceptable limits.
Commander, I don't want to cut you off, I do know that we, this plan is in the works, correct, Mr. Manager?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, if I, if I may, as opposed to a short answer of yes, and Mr. Parker is right, there has been a considerable amount of effort in engineering and thought, and I know that the neighborhood has asked for a raised table intersection, there's a lot of discussion about that, because the speed is along the entire roadway. The engineering team is looking at that, as well as a reduced speed limit, there's a lot of traffic theory, well beyond my expertise, related to this, and I know that their efforts have been focused along the entire roadway as well, not a point in the roadway. What I think, what I would like to do is send a report from our engineers. I know Alan Seacrest has been in touch with neighborhood leadership, there's a lot of back-and-forth dialogue on this, this is not backburnered at all, this is top priority, and I think an update is proper at this point.
Excellent, thank you.
Yeah, and I agree with that, we've been working very closely with Alan and in support of his efforts, but it's been a long, drawn-out process now, close to three years, and so I would suggest that you look at, there's really two ways to slow traffic, and that's either through TPD enforcement or implementation of some form of a raised intersection. You have to have a vertical rise in any kind of traffic control to have any meaningful effect on that. And there's been a lot of information that's available on the website from the Florida Department of Transportation, U.S. Department of Transportation, international engineers, which support raised intersections can be engineered up to speeds of 35 miles an hour. They're appropriate for a lot of areas that we need addressing. So I suggest they take another look at those.
Thank you. Commander, thanks again for your service, certainly appreciate it. Sir, if you wouldn't mind, my chief of staff, Dr. Thomas Whitley's in the back of the room, if you can make sure that I have contact information for you, that'd be great. Our next speaker, Mr. Clerk.
Mayor, the next speaker is Michael McLaughlin, and then Henry Choice, and those are the last two speakers for whom I have a form. And I have none connected via WebEx, Mayor.
Thank you so much for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you very much, Commissioners. My name is Michael McLaughlin, I'm at 100 Cadiz Street. And as a queer person, it's great to be here on the day that the city recognizes June as Pride Month. I also want to echo what the previous speaker said about traffic safety, 6th Street can be a little scary biking along there, as well as keeping our civilians safe during interactions with the police, and ensuring black Tallahashtians on the south side have safe and affordable housing and aren't displaced from the gentrification project at Orange Avenue. But today, I want to speak to you about keeping safe a particular group of people. On September 5th of last year, 14 people were arrested for peacefully protesting on a sidewalk outside the Capitol. The following week, four more people were arrested, and there's still an outstanding blank warrant. Members of this group, members of this group known as the Tallahassee 19, are still facing charges and the possibility of spending 10 years in jail for speaking up in support of black lives. I'm here today to publicly ask you to support the folks who were wrongly arrested and are still facing charges. We need you, your help to keep our folks in the community where they belong. If you are not already doing so, and I thank you, Commissioner Matlow, for standing with the Tallahassee 19 before, but if you aren't, Matlow, we ask that you add your voice here as a city commissioner to demand that all the, that all the charges against the Tallahassee 19 be dropped. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Mr. Clerk.
Henry Choice. Henry Choice, who did leave a handout at my desk, we'll just make that a part of the record, he may have had to leave at this point.
Excellent. Okay, moving into closing comments by Commissioners, Commissioner Porter, we'll start with you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So just to follow up with the comments about Lafayette Park, is that something that's going to be brought back to us, Mr. Manager? Not sure.
Mr. Tetter or Ms. Barber, could one of y'all please fill in for the manager while he stepped out? Commissioner Porter, if you wouldn't mind, restating the question.
Thank you, Mr. Tetter. I was just asking if, if we should expect, or if we can have, an item brought back to the commission with an update where we've come with regard to the comments made by the concerns, the Lafayette Park Neighborhood Association, because I know that I've gotten a lot of emails over the past couple of months, it seems like we've definitely been doing a good job communicating with them, but it's sort of, we're at a point where decisions have to be made about what we're gonna do next, you know, can you give us an update on that?
So, Mayor and Commissioners, basically we're following the traffic calming policies that's adopted by the city commission, so it's a gradual step process to see if we can find out solutions before we get to major expensive improvements. As we go through that process, when we find out what works and what does not work, certainly if it's a capital project expenditure, that would come back before you to have that decision. But absolutely, if it's the will of the board to get an update, we can provide that update to you.
So I'm familiar with sort of the steps that we take, I guess if you can answer, where are we along the process of sort of, because it seems like we've tried a couple of things, and there are a few specific asks the neighborhood has that I understand, whether it's, you know, the pedestrian island, reducing the speed limit, and the raised intersect, you know, so where are we along that process?
I believe, if I recall correctly, we met with Renetta Curry-Marshall and her staff about a week ago. I believe they're actually working through a design to try to squeeze in the road, because the wider the roads are, the faster folks want to drive. So they're looking at a design to try to bring that in, so it kind of squeezes traffic through and slows people down from a visual perspective. And at this point, we don't, we do not know until it's final design, because you'd have utilities you have to look out for, you know, there could be above-ground and below-ground utilities, so we can't even put a cost to it until the design is completed.
Mr. Mayor.
Sure, Mr. Mayor.
And Commissioners, Wayne, just stay with us. I think, and I'm more than happy to bring an agenda item back, this has been thoroughly discussed and reviewed, it's, as you can tell, Wayne and I are aware of it. They are looking at designs, again, I know the aim is through the entire roadway, not a point in the road. Pretty exhaustive designs that would deal with traffic friction to slow people down, there's a lot of techniques now. I think an agenda item, I'm happy to bring that back to this body.
Point of clarification, is it an agenda item for our approval? It's my understanding that the policy we have in place allows us just to move forward, expedite, and be able to do the project if they meet all the requirements, or is it just an information item?
I can take direction in either way, there is discretion within professional staff as to the best techniques. There has been a lot of discussion on this one, the neighborhood in particular, it strongly advocates for a raised intersection, whether that is recommended by engineers or not, I don't think they're at that point. We can make the recommendation and seek your direction, or we can bring an informational item. Typically, these items would be executed at the professional staff level.
Correct.
It's an important issue, there's no doubt about it, it's a challenging issue, I think we all know those roadways. And frankly, Mr. Mayor, we're open to that, but I think certainly the professionals, we want to give them time to work and come up with a good, long-term viable solution, one that works for everything and achieves the desired outcome of slowing the road and making it, roads and making them safer. Certainly I can bring an informational item, and if you would like to provide other direction, I think that would be acceptable.
The will of the board, and I'm coming back to you, Commissioner Porter, you do have the floor. The policy has been drafted in such to expedite this process, that once there is agreement between the neighborhoods and staff, heaven forbid they wait on the commission for final approval, that could be weeks or months, depending on the time of year. It was my understanding that the policy's been developed, so that within the policy, when the agreement is made, move forth, make that judgment call and move forth. If we get in the business of bringing back every traffic calming issue to the commission for informational review, we will not be doing anything else because of the number of informational items that would be coming back. I would suggest, if it is more expedient to bring the issue back, bring it back. If it is more expedient, come to agreement with the neighborhood, and as the policy states and gives the flexibility for the staff direction, move forward. Mr. Porter, you have the floor, and I'm sorry for taking up so much of your time.
No, that's okay, I feel the same way, I don't, I'm not invested in any specific outcome, whether it's, you know, I'm still new and learning about these policies, I just want to make sure, as it seems that it is, that this is getting adequate attention and that we're moving along, because it does seem like it's been a while, and I know these things take a while, but it's also a public safety concern. So whatever we think is gonna be the most expedient way forward, I don't know if it's something we want to include the midtown working group in, I'm not trying to complicate it, I just want to make sure we're moving forward, because I know the neighborhood is, you know, I'm getting a lot of emails, and I know it's a concerning issue to them.
One point, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, bro, Tim.
Thank you, I just want to weigh in, one I want to recognize, the frustration of the neighborhoods, I know we started this conversation, Wayne, maybe three years ago, and I know the process isn't, isn't the most expedient outcome that you may imagine, but they have gone through the process of, you know, putting out the traffic control things, and I know we've seen the photos of accidents that have happened in the meantime, so I understand your push for expediency. I agree, I mean, it's a high priority of mine to see what those solutions could be. I'm not speaking directly for any one solution, other than a solution that we can all agree, we'll slow the traffic down. And, you know, you mentioned narrowing of lanes, I know the things that slow me down are the narrow lanes that jut out and they jump back, and you pretty much can't drive fast down those roads, but I think what's agree, whatever our engineers can come up with that's agreeable with the neighborhood, that has an actual impact... neighborhood, that has an actual impact of slowing traffic down outside of having to put enforcement out there, and then people just speed when there's not enforcement, whatever that solution is, I'm all for it, and I'm all for doing it as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Mr. Porter, you still have the floor.
Well, do you have any feedback for us based on where we're at in this conversation?
No, I think the comments are right on task, so staff's responsibility, again, is to try to find out, and what complicates this one, most importantly, this is a major collector roadway, if not close to an arterial roadway for our community. It moves a lot of vehicles throughout Tallahassee, a lot. So you, and again, another thing that kind of is some complexity to this project, it's also a major access point to the hospital. So you got to think about the medical facility, the ambulances trying to get to the hospital and things like that. So those are a lot of concerns we're doing, but the idea is to find a solution, exactly what you said, Commissioner Matlow, to make sure that the neighborhood feels safe, a safe solution at the lowest cost possible for our citizens. And so if we can find a design that kind of fits that bill, then that's what we're trying to do, is try to get to that point and figure out what is the best way to slow traffic along that major arterial roadway.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, let me say, we will provide you a written summary.
Absolutely.
And so that won't slow us down, we'll keep you apprised of the situation. It may very well be that the neighborhood and engineers don't come to an agreement.
Sure.
I don't want to leave that with the expectation that they do. Wayne and I are engaged, and we'll work through that, and we'll keep you abreast of the progress.
Excellent. Absolutely.
Thank you. I just have one more kind of thought, question. So I know that on our agendas, we have the city commission priorities, you know, the tags, which I think are really helpful. Do we know anything about the capacity within board docs? You know, where, for instance, you could sign up for, to get like a ping or an email anytime, a quality of life item is put on the agenda, or an economic development item is put on the agenda, or a neighborhood item is on the agenda?
Commissioner Porter, that's a good question. I'd love to come back at a subsequent meeting and give you an answer to that. I know I've had just enough discussions about that over time to know that there either is or isn't a solution, but I don't know any of the specifics about board docs right now, so I'd love to be able to give you an informed response.
Okay.
But I understand your question.
Okay. Perfect. Well, I'll follow up with you. Thank you.
Commissioner Williams-Cox.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to report out on the South Side action plan, I want to brag a little bit, if that's okay, if that's in order.
Of course.
The, we're happy to report that the team of Devin and Laura and many, many others have been actively engaged in the community to get surveys done for people who may or may not have access. We've done 10 events in the community, two community events, two drive-through engagements, six pop-ups in community centers and parks, three virtual community discussions, two survey drop boxes in the community. They've been to Perry Library and the Temple Office, but those are the two drop boxes. There's also building connections, they've been to the South City Foundation, South Side Builders, Capital City Chamber of Commerce, Neighborhood Association Presidents, commercial developers, affordable housing development owners, and somewhere between 350, 400 surveys have been collected. Staff is working hard to spread the message. Devin, who's the lead Energizer Bunny on this, and he's out there, you know, in the news, he's on radios, three radio stations, he's in articles in the Capital Outlook. His team has attended as many events on the South Side as they can, including an event tonight at Bond Elementary fundraiser. So, and I know we're all talking it up wherever we go to get people to complete the surveys, talgov.com/southside. Here's our opportunity to engage with the public, to hear what it is that we want to have happen on the South Side, so please, please take advantage of this opportunity. Mr. City Manager, I've also, you and I have been talking about the variance ordinance, and I've been asked to see if there's a possibility that we could bring that to a city commission meeting prior to the break, and for very good reason, you've shared with me that there's some complications in doing that, but that there is a time in sight that that can occur, so would you elaborate on that?
Yes, ma'am. Let me give it a shot. And Karen Jumminville, our growth management director's on WebEx, if I could ask for WebEx to be pulled up. That's been part of the process, the review process, you just went through a process to update some of our land development code. And I think what was discovered is, a number of the variance, variances and deviations would not have been necessary if we cleaned our code up, and that, I think that's what you aspire to do, is have a code that's reflective but flexible to allow for proper development within the character of what we expect. And so that process is happening, expected, I think, to come in for a landing this fall, at which time it would be proper to take up the issue of variances and deviations. Karen, I see you on WebEx. Please help me, hopefully I haven't steered too far off course, but I believe that's an accurate timeline.
Yes, City Manager, that's correct. We plan to bring both ordinances to the city commission for consideration in the fall, both an ordinance that addresses variances and deviations in the criteria, but also a glitch ordinance that does some code cleanup of issues that are frequently deviated.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. There was one other thing, I'm trying to remember. Oh. We won't meet again prior to high school graduations and promotions, and so we just want to say congratulations to all of our graduates out there, and for proper nomenclature, if you're moving from kindergarten to first grade, if you're moving from fifth grade to eighth grade, and if you're moving from eighth, let me, sixth, no, fifth grade, sixth grade, and then eighth grade to high school, that's called promotion. But if you're graduating 12th grade, the terminology is graduation, otherwise it's a promotion. So make sure you correct that, because I've been corrected a few times. But I want to say congratulations to all of our high school graduates on their way to college. As you know, my right-hand doctor, Dr. Tawanda Davis, her daughter graduated and is on her way to Purdue. She's going, they call, they say boil her up, because they're the boilermakers, and so I want to say congratulations to Cameron Davis, and to all of our other graduates at whatever level, pre-K, I mean, promotions from pre-K on up. So keep it moving.
Thank you. Commissioner Richardson.
I don't have anything, Mayor.
Mayor, Pro Tim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have one item tonight. A couple weeks ago, a video circulated on social media that showed a young man faced down being struck with a baton three, four times, and that caused me a lot of concern. Subsequently, we saw TPD release the body camera footage, which largely confirm what we saw in the social media video, but also raised additional concern, up to and including the lack of body cameras being mounted in a proper way that we have continuous footage that we pay for. I think it's important, when we have these conversations, when we're looking at whether something's justified, or whether something fits into our current policy, to always take a step back and say, is this what we want to be doing? Because is there a better way? Could this situation have gone differently if we made different choices or had different policies? Because it's a hard position to be in, but we give officers the tools that we give them, and we expect them to be reasonable in their use, and I think that's very important. But I think too often, we get caught in conversations when there's an officer-involved shooting, or there's a use-of-force incident, and it becomes, are we anti-police? Are we, you know, destroy, anti-the-community? Is it excessive force? But the question, I believe, always needs to be, whether it's justified or not, how can we avoid this type of violence? How can we avoid this type of loss of life? Because there, and it may start at what happened in that second, it may have to do with things that happened 10, 20, 30 minutes prior. So I, when I'm looking at these incidents, I think we hear a lot about, well, this is best practice, or this is what it takes to be accredited, but we're in the middle of a national conversation that's saying best practices aren't good enough. You know, this is going on, it's not just our community affected, and we're no different than other communities, about how we can address things differently, but I can't, what, I think we continue to miss very valuable opportunities. When we saw 200 law enforcement officers descend on North Monroe and arrest 19 unarmed protesters, when we saw social media video of that incident of a young person being lifted from the ground by the hair on their head, and we did nothing. When we have incidents like these, and we continue to do nothing, it sends a very strong signal, and as leaders of our community, as a city commission, as a city manager, as a police chief, the best thing we can do for our officers on the street is restore trust in our community. They can't do it as individuals, it has to come from the top, that we want to build a relationship that's different, because we can spin our wheels, we can do community engagement events, but we've been doing it for years and years and years, and at some point, we have to realize, we got to do something different. Maybe we don't agree with the changes that need to happen, because we can recognize that a law enforcement officer's job is very, very difficult, and that we put them in situations that many people do not want to be in. But we can't say we want to do better as an indictment of what that officer does every day. We want to do better for the entire community, so we can move in a direction where we don't continue to see protests, where people can show up after an incident and support, we can move and as one city towards where we need to go. So I want to raise a couple specific objections from what we saw, and namely, Mr. City Manager, do you have an idea of how much money we spend on body camera footage annually? Or the body camera technology? I know that's on the spot, but we spend millions of dollars collectively over the years on body camera footage, and if the chief is with us, I'll, is he with us today?
He is. Mr. Mayor, would you like the chief to weigh in on that?
Please.
Hey, sorry, trying to get this right. Can you hear me?
Yeah. Sound good.
If you want me to address all the things you mentioned, or specifically just how much we spend on
Yeah, Chief, I think the question is related to the expenditure for body camera and body camera services.
We definitely have spent millions over the years. I think specifically what you want to hear me address is the fact that we had four body cameras in this particular incident, and we had two others in another incident that fell off during the altercation, in which the person was actively resisting in both of those cases, and I think that needs to be clarified very clearly. But our officer that's in the court with you, or in the commission with you today, has a new body camera mount. Axon has realized this is not just an issue in Tallahassee, this is an issue that's occurring across the country with this particular magnetic mount, and Axon has agreed to replace every one of those mounts with the mount the officer has there in the commission. It's much more secure, very, very secure mount, you'll be able to see it as Charles comes forward there, so thank you for doing that. Obviously, we recognize that those cameras coming off is a serious issue right away. We began addressing that right away, and as soon as we contacted Axon, they immediately said they have, you know, heard from other agencies across the country as well, and have developed this new mount, which they will be sending us as soon as they get them off a back order.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So at no, let me add, at no cost to the agency, they're replacing them for free.
Chief, let me
And in that time, I have mandated, we do have some pocket mounts that are more secure than the magnetic mounts, and I just issued an email today saying that our magnetic mounts will no longer be used until the new mounts come in, and everyone will use the heightened secured pocket mounts.
Chief, let me add to that, because I believe the mount we're talking about, essentially is third generation. Not long ago, we had the shoulder mount, and you remember seeing some of that in the footage over the summer, and those had their own issues, they were tethered by a wire, they fall off. We moved to the chest mount, the chest mount's a magnet, it was a, it's a national model, it's not unique to us. It's now, so these were adjustments that TPD does observe and makes. You can see the chief addressing that, so you kind of learn through that experience of the different versions, kind of the shortcomings. They are wireless, so they kept recording, but they were no longer tethered to the officer. Thank you, Chief.
Absolutely. Thank you.
And thank you, Chief, and I think that's exactly where we need to go. You know, you mentioned that these incidents happen during active resistance, those are the most important incidents that we need to capture on body camera, both for the safety and protection of our officers, but also for the public, and I know that's been a concern across the country with this vendor, and different agencies have different steps, and I think that's the perfect example of a proactive step we can see from an incident and make a change based on it. As far as the baton use, what material are our batons made out of?
The baton used in that particular instance is an ASP, ASP, it's a collapsible baton, and it's, it's a metal alloy.
Okay. And I know that the Citizens Police Review Board, I believe, is going to review this tomorrow. I'm not going to step on what their findings are, but internally, the findings of the city have been that this was within policy.
This was absolutely within policy and within state statute.
Have you looked at, similar to the way the body cameras have changed, have we looked at ways that we could proactively update the policy to avoid incidents like this from occurring again?
Commissioner, if you wouldn't mind, I know one of the things that this commission has done is that it has adopted an ordinance to specifically have the citizens consider whether or not, you know, they want to make recommendations based on, and those recommendations would be based on past practices and based on what's best practices, and they would consider all the information as they bring it in from other jurisdictions, consider and make recommendations to the police chief, and also to the city manager as to what would be best. And I would recommend, at this point, that we allow the board that has been established by the city commission to consider this matter.
Thank you, Madam Turdy. And my question was just if we had considered anything internally, and that's fine if we haven't, and we could see what their opinion is. But again, as decision makers, one conversation that's happening nationally that I think really zeroes in on the issue we're seeing here is the difference between whether somebody acted reasonably, or somebody, an action was necessary. I believe this is a component of the George Floyd Justing and Policing Act. So I think when we look at, reasonable minds can probably look at that video and come from different backgrounds and come to different conclusions. So I get, what I'm looking for is, when the Citizens Police Review Board, if they make a conclusion that this is not within policy, or if it is within policy and they want to change the policy, what is the next step from that recommendation? I mean, obviously, this is a citizens volunteer board, they don't have the authority to institute a policy, so as those directives come in, what's the expectation of how that would be received?
Mr. Sutton, you are not only the inspector general, but you also staff police review board. Please walk
Mr. Mayor, on point.
Sure.
I'm getting very uncomfortable
Me, too.
With this conversation, because the board is meeting tomorrow night, we're prescripting, we may be, I'm going to say it like this, we may be prescripting something that we might not, ought to be prescripting, and I've been very careful not to say anything publicly, because I don't want to get ahead of what we put in place, and this is the first time that I'm aware of, that we're actually going to them with something like this to come back for the community. I want them to be set up for success without us putting our finger on the scale, and I'm not saying And I'm not saying you're doing it, I'm just saying, I am getting very uncomfortable with where this line of questioning is going in this conversation, because they may be watching, or they may be, someone else may be watching, that may be sharing something with them. And I don't want their judgment to be tainted by any conversation that we may be having here tonight. And, I'm just.
If we could, if we could please have a little bit of order in chamber.
And it's okay to speak up, but I don't want, I don't want to find myself having to testify against the city of Tallahassee, because I've said something in good, you know, with good intentions. And I know, I know they're well-intended. And listen, I'm the mother of three black sons, so I know more, I know better than most. But I just don't want us to jeopardize a process that people asked for, for a long, long time, to put in place. Let's give them the best opportunity. And then after they've done what they've done, then we can come back and talk about what we can do, what we need to do next. That's all I'm saying. I'm not telling you what to do, I'm just telling you how I feel.
And thank you. I respect that, I know where you're coming from. I don't intend for us to make, make a motion to take any action today, but I do want to illustrate exactly what the role of the Police Review Board is, what their authority has, and who has ultimate authority to make a change for the public's awareness. You know, I can't influence what a large board can do, any more than any individual can influence what this board would do. They're all different individuals, and they all come to their own conclusion. But I just want to make sure, my line of questioning is just simply, when we had the Police Review Board conversation, the whole conversation circled around what would their authority be and their ability to be, to actually issue an order, and that's all I'm looking for clarification on.
Madam Attorney, is the ordinance.
The ordinance itself basically provides for that board to report back to the city manager, to the police chief with recommendations, and to this board, this commission with recommendations. So ultimately, the final decision-makers will be you.
Right. We are the policymaking board.
All right, Mayor Pro Tim, you still have the floor.
And, yeah, I'll close my thoughts there. We are the final policymaking board. We do have the authority to effect change. This Police Review Board, I believe, should be a valuable tool to us to make recommendations, but some decisions are just so clear that I would expect the city manager and the police chief to take immediate action. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. You stand adjourned. Have a great evening.